Okay, I'm gonna call to order 7:02, I'll call to order this December 15, 2015, meeting of the Board of Selectmen. First order of business is approval of the minutes of November 17.
We approve the minutes of November 17, 2015.
I'll second that. Motion made, second for further discussion. Sign all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
unanimous. Confirmation of future meeting dates, we have December 22nd, we have an executive session scheduled, January 5th, January 12th, January 19th, and January 26th.
Yeah, those work for my schedule.
Yes.
Okay, great. Item four on the agenda is approval of payroll and vendor warrants.
Make a motion to approve the current payroll and vendor warrants.
Second.
Motion made, second for further discussion. Sign all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Item five is citizen speak. Are there any citizens who would like to address? Just start with somebody.
I'm happy to go first. I got here super early.
If you could just state your name and address also.
So I'm Stephanie Hartwell, my address is 9 Artwell Street. It's nice to see you all and thank you for having us tonight and the ability to do this. I'm here to speak on behalf of Chief Wells. I'm speaking as a professional and someone who's not a casual observer of police. I'm actually one of the founding faculty members of the Criminal Justice Program at UMass Boston and have been there 20 years. Chief Wells is an alumni of UMass Boston along with notables Tom Manino, William Bratton, who's the Commissioner of Police in New York City. I'd like to say he's trained really well. I wish he was of my cohort. I came after him, but we do a phenomenal job training our students and I've known him as a professional in that capacity since I've moved to Milton and I knew him somewhat before from the UMass campus. What I will say is, we don't always agree. You know, we might have different politics, but when I'm in the woods running with my friends, I will also say that he has done a deft job, had a very difficult job, being the police chief in Milton. And Milton is a really interesting place if you think of its geography and you also think of some of the things that Milton has gone through in the last decade alone with the first school lockdowns, the opiate crisis. The poor boy who fell out of the plane on the street over hillside there, that's right, I used to know the name of the street, Briarwood. These are really high-profile things that could take a town down with, you know, administrators that aren't as seasoned, aren't as dignified, and don't handle the situations as deftly as the police department has. I speak to the police all the time. They think that they do tremendously well in comparison to other towns in terms of the resources that they've been able to garner and how they use them, given our strategic location next to Boston and the surrounding areas. And I think the most important point, it's a, he strikes a fine balance to be a town police chief in Milton, in where we are in Milton and as a country right now. It's hard to keep that feel of a community. And that's one thing, as I have observed, that I don't see in other surrounding towns, which is an amazing thing that should be highly valued. And the other thing, as a professional woman, I see people that retire and leave vacancies, that sometimes their shoes are so hard to fill and you don't find the right person, or you find a person who's not as good or not as ethical. And I think that's something really to consider too, that change in finding the right replacement person can be arduous and oftentimes doesn't work. So that's what I came to say tonight and thank you very much for having me.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Sir.
I'm Dave Shinn, I live at 10 Collins Street.
Hi, Dave.
How are you, Katie? Happy New Year, Merry Christmas. I want to talk to you about the planning boards meeting last week, and I watched it because there was nothing better on TV last night, so I omit that. Comments were made about the building inspector. Accusations, serious and egregious accusations were levied against the building inspector by Thayer. Now, I make no secret about it, I mean, Bob Ballfield, not Bob Ballfield. Everyone around this table.
Dave, just before you go too far, just be very careful about what you say.
I know, I'm going to, I'm going to. I think the Board of Selectmen needs to respond to the accusations. I think the Board of Selectmen needs to set the record straight. Maybe not tonight, going forward at another meeting, answer the charges that were levied. They're serious. They're talking about the integrity of the process of the town government. I think he's handled the situation, I adjudicate claims. They love me when I approve them, they hate me when I deny them, but when I deny them, it's the process, it's the integrity, it's the policy, it's the law that I base my denial on it. I have another concern about this whole situation that's gonna come up, I think Thursday, when they issue the special permit. It's gonna be the building commissioner or his designate, because someone doesn't want the building commissioner on their property. Okay? Who's the designate? Who makes that decision? What happens if there's a problem with the designate? When does it stop? I think we're opening Pandora's Box here. Enough blame, both sides got it. We all support Thayer, we want it to succeed. But it's time for the board to step in and answer these charges. You know, I've seen this board and I've been impressed. You've all gone to bat for Thayer. We want it to work, we want everyone to get along, but you can't be making comments like that. And I urge the board, maybe not tonight, to get Mr. Palmer in here or hear his side of the events and say, because quite frankly, no matter what he does, he can't win. And it's unfortunate we're at that side, and I don't want to say, there's something called weird like the blaming. No, enough blame, we gotta get past it, we need to move on. There's gonna be a vote, I think Thursday, and they're gonna approve the special permit. It's gonna get litigated. We're gonna be back here in February. I think you've got some room to say, cool off here. Because that lone lord, designate, that's gonna open huge Pandora's Box, and the reasoning to put him in there, I think creates a dangerous precedent in the town going forward on other projects or other issues, because me and Marie and I work together. We don't get along. I don't want to deal with Marie, I want to deal with Tom. Look, you're a grown woman. You can't behave like that. So that's my chime in on this. I don't like what was said. I don't think this is where it should be, and I think as a board, do you want that responsibility to appoint a designate? What happens next time? It doesn't hurt you. So, Katie, thank you for your email. I urge you to definitely get involved in this, to weigh in. And also, that special permit, it's gonna get litigated. And I think, you know, you're gonna have another crack at it in February. Let's be blowing it hard about it, but it seems to me this is gonna stop. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
Yes, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Brian Stafford. I live at 18 Hope Ave, East Milton, and a resident there for about 23 years. I speak tonight to voice support for Chief Wells in his bid to renegotiate his contract with the Board of Selectmen to continue his position as Milton's Chief of Police. I would like to share a recent interaction I had with the Chief Wells. It was an email correspondence between him and I after the Milton Police Night Out event in August 2015. This is the email I sent August 6th at 10:09 a.m. "Chief Wells, wanted to drop a quick note to thank you for the excellent service the Milton Police Department does for the town. I was especially appreciative of the way the department opened its doors to the community last night. I thought it was awesome. I think it does a wealth of good to show the community, especially the kids, how important the police are to a community. I was proud and happy to show my son what the Milton Police are about. Everybody there last night was so very professional and courteous and willing to show us every nuance of how the Milton Police protect and care for the town and its residents. Last night for me was a time to reiterate to my son the message that the police are the good guys, the ones who protect us, who deserve our utmost respect and admiration." I think he got it. I'll continue to teach him these important lessons of respect that will make him a good man someday. Once again, many thanks to you and the Milton Police Department for a job well done. Keep up the great work. His response, at 6:00 p.m., which I was oppressed the same day that I actually got a response, "Dear Brian, your words say it all. We live in a time when it is very tough to be in policing, in Milton. However, we are fortunate to have such a great community with people like you and your son. We were honored to host the event and for me as chief, on behalf of all the men and women of the MPD, it is very humbling. Thanks again and so glad you had fun. Enjoy the summer. Richard G. Wells Jr." I personally have had a few other interactions with the Chief of Police that have always been positive, and for this reason, I hope he continues as the Chief of Police for the town of Milton. I think the town is a better place with him as chief, and thank you for the opportunity to allow him to speak tonight.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
Hi.
Hello.
Good evening. My name is Charles Bonso, and this is my wife, Islaen Bonso. We live at 96 Brook Road, and we are here to support Chief Wells. And we've lived in Milton for upwards of 22 years, and we that town would exceed the floor two.
I wish I was as organized as Brian and wrote my thoughts down. I am here to support Chief Richard Wells. I have lived in this house, Charles said, for upwards of 22 years. And I've had several interactions with him, especially when we've had issues on our end of town. He is always very responsive, and it is because of his response to us as a neighborhood why we can now feel safe on the streets, not being worried about people approaching us as we get out of our cars trying to sell us DVDs. The overnight parking issue was a major, major problem. We worked with the police to address that. We all remember a few years ago when there were several shootings on a particular street on our end. And while the media and the cameras left, Chief Wells stayed and worked with the community by having street-by-street town meetings. And he certainly didn't send a representative to those meetings, his deputy or a sheriff. He attended each of those town, street-by-street town meetings, and listened quite intently to what the neighborhood had to say. And most of those concerns were quickly addressed. We feel safer as a neighborhood because of the responsiveness of the police department, and the police department is as responsive as they are because they have great leadership in Chief Wells. And so, we're here to say that if it's not broken, we probably shouldn't fix it, because as a chief, he is a chief for all of the people, not just certain areas, not just certain demographic. He is a chief for all of the people, and we highly support him.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. And I too did not prepare anything in writing. Public speaking is not my forte, but on behalf of Chief Wells, I will say what I feel is important.
Can you name an address, please?
My name is Amelie Martenson. I live at 1435 Canton Avenue. I had the pleasure of meeting Chief Wells through St. Mary of the Hills, where his daughter goes to school. And I'm not the type of person that contacts the police. We just kind of mind our own business and go about doing what we need to do. But we had the unfortunate, the misfortune of losing a pet to neighbors who didn't mind their pets the way that they should have. And we were feeling unsafe in our home and tried to figure out the situation as best as we could, but reaching out to Chief Wells, he handled the situation quickly and promptly and reassured us that we would be safe in our home and rectified the situation by mandating a fence go up and dogs be properly leashed and contained. I hope that Chief Wells continues as chief for as long as he chooses fit. He is highly professional, hard-working person, and I know that for whatever little issue I may contact him for, he will reach immediately back out to me. And it's usually within a four-hour timeframe of making a phone call, and he gets immediately back to us. Again, I reiterate the sentiments of the previous speaker, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. He is working hard for every citizen here in Milton to make sure that our streets are safe, that our children are safe, and the crime rates are down, and protecting all citizens of Milton.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amelie.
Sorry, we're not following directions.
Anybody else like to address the board? Yes, sir.
My name is David Heaton, from 17 Low Circle. I'm here also to speak on behalf of Chief Wells and to urge the town and this board to re-up and continue his contract as long as possible. My wife Jessica and I relocated here about nine and a half years ago from Washington DC. We searched North Shore, Metro West, South Shore, further south, and kept coming back to this town. And we decided to relocate here for a few reasons. First and foremost was the location. It was easy commute downtown for work. Second was the school. And the third, which for me was very important, was the fact that it was a safe town, in light of its proximity to some not-so-safe areas of Boston and some surrounding towns. I actually found it hard to understand why it was so safe, you know, having lived in DC for so long and seeing how crime does travel. After relocating here, maybe about two or three years, we quickly, I quickly understood why. And that was because we had a police force that was professional, that was dedicated to the town, was very community-minded, meaning they knew the various communities, they knew what worked and what did not work in those towns, I mean, those areas. And I don't think it was, it's not by luck that we have such a professional and strong police force. I, you know, we look around this country, both small towns and large towns have issues with their police force. They have unprofessional, bad people in their force. I don't think we have that here. I think ours are by and large, top-notch. I firmly believe that that's, you know, in business, we talk about tone from the top, and I think the tone from the top in this town from Chief Wells is outstanding. I think he's a great person. I've known him personally since I moved to town. And strongly believe that letting him go or not renewing his contract would do the citizens of this town a disservice. With that, my few words are done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Lisa McDonough. I live at 13 Crane Road. I am new to Milton, but not new to Chief Wells. I've known him for 15 years. And I used to think that, before I moved here and heard all these wonderful stories the last few months about him, that I was kind of special, that he would go out of his way to do things for me, because we were friends. Well, it's not. It's because he's just that kind of a guy, and he does go out of his way for every citizen, every person who lives in Milton. He looks at the situation, addresses the situation appropriately, and as long as your heart is in the right place, he tries to help you anyway you can. He might not be able to fix your problem, but he's gonna be there for you. And another way that he does this is through his charity. And he, just this past Friday, got the Captain Jennifer Harris Award for raising money for Mass Fallen Heroes. And I think that having a police chief that is so involved in charity is very important, and I think it says a lot for our town, because the person who is running our police force cares about the less fortunate. He raises money, I mean, Mass Fallen Heroes is just one of the things he does. He raises money for other small, other veterans charities, Lucy's Love Bus, which is a charity for children. He raises money for the Pan Mass Challenge every year, so Jimmy Fund gets that money, and also Cops for Kids with Cancer. So I think that says a lot for our town that our police chief is so willing to give of himself and of his time to raise money for these charities. And I think he does a wonderful job. He gives of himself freely, and losing him as chief would really be a disservice to our town. Thank you, Lisa.
Anybody else? Okay, say nothing, we'll move on. Okay, item six on the agenda is a conference on other post-employment benefits, Gatsby 45, with our town accountant, Amy Dexter, and Parker Almore from Odyssey Advisors. Amy?
Amy?
Good evening. Good evening. How are you? We're gonna talk some fun stuff again before you- Yeah, yeah, fun stuff. If you waited two years, you'd get back in front of the game. Some big changes, though, this time. I mean, you guys actually sliced a little bit of good news, so that's always good. You know, the last two years, you guys' results have been relatively flat. I don't have the mouse, but if somebody else does, click. Yeah, we can skip this slide. I mean, you guys know who we are. We've been here for a while, so. So, yeah, I mean, your guys' liabilities over the last two years have been relatively flat. You went from 92 million to 95 and a half, so you're expected to be at 100 million, so they're paid about a $5 million gain or better than expected experience. So that's a good thing. It would have been a little bit better than that, except for the fact, one of the things we're doing is we're changing, it's called your actuarial cost method, which is more than how you really care about. The issue is, Gatsby 75 is coming for fiscal 18, which I'll talk about in a few minutes, and so we're trying to get things aligned for that to make for a smooth transition to that. So otherwise, you would have had about a $12 million gain absent that change. So we wanted to, you know, bring that in now, so when we get to fiscal 18, you know, a big surprise when that happens. So we factor that in now. You're not funding your liability at this point, at least on a pre-funded basis. You're doing pay-as-you-go. You're hardly alone. That is, the large majority of towns and municipalities, both across this state and across the US, so you're definitely not alone in that regard. So don't feel like you're on an island. On the next page, we'll just talk a little bit about the normal cost. That's the value of benefits being earned during the year by your active employees. About 3.3 million, it was 3.5 the prior cycle, so again, a little bit better than average, about 7% better than expected. So again, your costs have come down a little bit. Your net OPEP expense, as we talked about a couple of years ago, that's the amount of money we're putting on your financial statements, is basically the value, you're taking into account the benefits earned during the year, plus you also take into account the value of benefits that existed prior to the adoption of Gatsby 45. We're phasing it over a 30-year period. So we have to really take into account that historical experience as well. So that's why you're booking almost $9 million to your financial statement for the year.
You say there's natural gain already built into that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. So, yeah, I mean, your experience would have been worse had it not been for that. Your employer's share of costs went from 3.2 down to 2.9 million, so again, that's the cash out the door to pay for retiree benefits. Not all your medical benefits, retiree medical here. So again, good experience, you know, it was a very good, very good experience, and it's a good thing. Just a quick thing, when you come, where's my $92 million number come from, or $95 million number come from? Just a couple of quick assumptions. We use a 4% interest rate on that. We use certain termination rates, retirement rates, election percentages. Where we can, we nearly assumptions used by Parac, so we're not just picking assumptions out of thin air going, hey, let's assume people retire here, die there. We're using whatever Parac is using, because they have experienced studies they've done for the entire state. Your guys' population isn't really big enough to go, well, gee, the town is built. We see people retiring at this rate. You don't have enough people retiring to really use your own experience. The town, I mean, the state experience is really what we're using. And again, right now, we're using a 5% healthcare cost inflation. I will tell you that I ultimately think that's too low, but lately, people have had good experience, as you did this cycle. However, statistically, I have seen, for those of you old enough to remember, the early 90s went through a similar situation of flat experience, about a two- to three-year period. And I can bet, like squeezing a balloon, eventually it comes out the other side. And have you seen a lot of the news about Affordable Care Act and premiums increasing, about 7.5% nationwide for 2016. And I'm seeing this among the towns we talked over fiscal, for next year, renewals are coming at 10%, 11%. So I think that, hopefully you guys are the exception and not the rule. We're seeing a lot of folks who have had a nice holiday for the last couple of years, and now it's gonna start catching up to them the next year or two. But again, hopefully in your case, that's not the case, and we'll see how that plays out. On the next page, we just kind of show you kind of how you compare to your peers, both locally and across the state. You know, your normal cost on a per-person basis is about $4,800 bucks. Here locally, you look at towns around you, they're all basically in the same basic ballpark. I mean, Foxborough is the exception on the low side, but they've done quite a few things to manage their liability, which most folks are not doing. And as far as our statewide average, we're about, you know, 255 plans across the state. You're $4,200, so you're not significantly different than the statewide average. For the unfunded percentage, proportion of your payroll is about 177%. Our statewide average is 161, so again, you're pretty much right in line. And your per-retiree cost, about $5,500 in terms of benefits out the door. And our statewide average, we see is 5,471. So again, you're pretty much right in line with the average across the state. One of the things we find it helpful for people to understand is, you know, what are benefits being earned each year? So we kind of split this out for you by function, but basically, for each of your active employees who are effectively earning a $4,885 benefit, if you will, it's deferred compensation, representing mainly retiree medical, if we're honest about it. Life insurance is pretty small. So, now that varies by function. So town employees, about 4,900. Public safety, as you might expect, is higher, because they tend to come in younger and leave earlier, and have a longer retirement period. DPW is a little bit higher. So again, it gives you an idea. So if you were to say, listen, if John Smith or Mary Jones makes $40,000 a year, they're also earning a $4,885 deferred benefit on top of their compensation. So it's just something to keep in mind of what an employee really costs.
So the public safety employee on a per-employee basis is higher because of the early retirement?
Exactly. Earlier retirement, they tend to come in younger, and obviously have a longer retirement period. You know, the Affordable Care Act and the excise tax, everyone says, well, why are we running out of the excise tax? Doesn't come into play until 2018, but the fact is, it is the law, and assuming the law doesn't change, that will come into play for a whole lot of people, you included. Your guys' plans, based on where you are, I would think, would probably hit the excise tax in about 2022, 2023, based on the way things currently stand.
Are any other towns, this is the so-called Cadillac Tax.
Yes, exactly.
And have you seen any other cities or towns trying to manage that?
Yeah, I mean, people are managing it. It's really a matter of, in your negotiations, the question is, I tell us to towns all the time, if you're going to your bargaining units and you say, listen, guys, 10,200 is the magic number for an individual plan. So if our plan was gonna cost 10,500, that's the $300 that would be above the tax.
Yep.
So the point is, to go to your bargaining, you go, guys, it's supposed to give you $300 of benefits, why don't we give you $250 of salary? Because obviously, there's gonna be some pension expense that comes with that, because of a higher comp. So you give them slightly less than that amount in terms of salary, they're break even. And the difference is, you don't give the federal government 40 cents of every dollar that you exceed that cap.
Right.
So that's really what we're trying to encourage people to do, is to think about, you're trying to move money from benefits toward cash. Whether you want to save money or not save money is a whole different story, but in terms of, on a purely economic, key people, whole basis, if you move money from benefits toward cash-
So plan, design, change.
Plan, design, exactly.
Yep.
And, you know, again, if somebody here at Towers Watson Survey, who's really one of the largest consulting firms out there, they expect large employer, about 48% will hit the tax in 2018 and 82% by 2023.
Yeah, that's, yeah, we say right now, well, we're not in it right now. And that's true, and that's true for a lot of people.
Excellent.
But that 10,200 or 27.5 is going up very, very slowly, much slower than the rate that healthcare costs are rising by, so that everybody's gonna get hit with it eventually.
Well, exactly.
And it's 40%.
Yeah, 40 cents of every dollar and above, and the key element is-
And that's a border peg.
Exactly. And as you said, that rises by, you know, general inflation, whereas healthcare costs go by medical care inflation. And secondly, the other big element I tell folks is, it's not geographically based. So if you live in the Northeast or in an area, say, with Teaching Hospital, aka Boston, you're gonna have higher medical costs than if I'm gonna live, say, in Iowa, Mississippi, or Alabama. So they're less likely to get hit by the tax. You're far more likely to get hit by the tax. That's just reality. As I also tell folks, and you've probably heard, there's an election coming up next year, and, you know, various candidates are against this tax, various people in Congress are against this tax. However, and then the supposed budget builder working on now, you know, the latest batch, they're trying to work this into a tax extenders package. But the problem is, it costs $91 billion, or it's expected to raise in a 10-year budget window. So how do you make up that $91 billion? Do you just do a tax cut? Do you find offsetting spending cuts? Everyone's against it, but nobody's had a great solution. So, you know, we'll see what happens on that. I mentioned before about Gatsby 75, because, you know, Gatsby 45 wasn't enough fun, so we had the Gatsby 75. You've seen Gatsby 68 on the pension side, it's largely going to mirror that. Many more disclosures. We're gonna talk about, you know, sensitivity to interest rates, sensitivity to mental trend. We're gonna have deferred inflows, outflows, a lot of additional stuff. The key thing I try and tell folks is, the big thing I would encourage folks to do over the next two years, is you start getting toward that path, is, to the extent that you wish to fund, think about having a funding policy in place, which is saying, we're gonna put in 100,000, 200,000, a million, whatever it is. Have a funding policy in place that you can adopt, as well as an investment policy statement, say, how am I going to invest the money? Is it gonna be- Is it gonna be fifty, fifty, seventy, thirty, whatever I wanna do? But the point is, when I go do Gatsby seventy-five, I have to factor in, what is your investment policy, and what is your funding policy, to determine what interest rate I'm going to use. So to the extent you have those things, maybe I'm using a six and a half or seven percent rate. If I'm not funding, I'm using a municipal bond index rate, which right now, is about three and a half percent. And for those of you who aren't aware, the more I raise the interest rate, the lower the liability goes. So higher interest rates equal lower liabilities. So again, I'm not saying you should or shouldn't fund, those are totally different situations, but they will impact how your financial statement looks, and the entire balance sheet, because one of the key elements here is, these liabilities move from the notes section of your financial statement to the balance sheet, which to me is not really a huge issue, because anybody buying your bonds knows how to flip to the notes section. But nonetheless, you have a lot of other debts, I'm sure you have, from the pension to this, to, you know, firehouses, bonds, whatever, I have no idea, but you have lots of those things. This is part of that entire portfolio of debt, and that's where the way that the ratings agencies tend to look at that. So we talked about the change in actual cost method, we've already done that. So again, they may pressure you to adopt funding policies. One of the other things that we talked about is, this municipal bond index rate is this crossover date or depletion date. The idea here is, well, we use one rate while you're, while you have enough money to pay for the benefits from your funded pool, and we use a different rate for the unfunded. In your guys' case, we would use the, you know, the municipal bond index rate overall.
So this is the same theory as Gatsby sixty-eight, the pension?
Gatsby sixty-eight, exactly, same theory, same basic math. So again, so that's really that, as far as what you can do to get ready, you know, we encourage everybody, talk to your auditors, talk to your actuaries. I mean, you've got two and a half years to figure this out, but this is, you know, you don't wanna be blindsided, go, gee, I wish we'd have thought about this. They give you plenty of time to think about it. Uh, we've certainly produced some white papers on it. Over the last few months, we've had three outs so far, I think, and another one coming out this week. And to kind of explain to people in more plain English, I mean, you're welcome to read, it's three hundred and six pages of wonderful reading, but to the extent you don't wish to read that, we've got some white papers to try and put it in English to make it a little bit easier for folks. And I mean, that's really it. I mean, the thing I tell folks all the time is, these benefits, these plans, the ultimate cost is the benefits out the door. We can play games of the assumptions, do various things, and show you ninety-five million or sixty million or a hundred and sixty million. The real cost of a plan is the benefits you pay out. So ultimately, it's cost sharing, it's plan design, it's eligibility, which the state doesn't let you touch. So it's really, it's the plan design and the eligibility and the cost sharing, that's really how you address the issue. Do you have questions I might go answer?
Um, one off the top of my head, what we, uh, we did just adopt a, a Gatsby forty-five trust.
Okay.
And it will be funded, what's, about six hundred grand or something like that's going into it? Approximately?
A little shy of six hundred.
Yeah. And, and, well, I don't think you could call us a, a funding policy per se, I mean, there's, there's an unwritten policy that point somewhat percent of the operating budget would be going into it, but it's not cast in stone if the Warren Committee decides that they're not gonna fund it this year, it doesn't get funded. Is that a funding policy, I guess?
Yeah, I mean, no, it's, it's a funding policy, because, I mean, everything's a funding policy, although it's not, in a sense of going, even if you were to adopt, you gotta vote here tonight, we're gonna adopt the policy, and we're gonna fund a million dollars a year from now until the end of time. That vote is as good until you have the next vote.
Yep.
And then you decide to undo it. So it's, it is a legitimate funding policy.
Okay.
The thing I, the thing I encourage folks to do, though, is when you adopt the policy, and we'll run numbers for over a thirty-four year period and show you what happens, is really working on a funding policy you're comfortable, you can live with for the near term, say, three to four years. It's tough to go to the ratings agencies, say, look, we got this great funding policy, we're addressing the issue, give us a ratings bump, they do it, and then six months later, you void the policy. Kinda looks like you're playing games.
Right.
So if you can at least, you know, they understand that things happen, recessions happen, something happened in the town, whatever, you know, there's a reason why funding policies have to change, but at least have a policy you can live with in the short term, so it looks like you've made a legitimate attempt to do it.
Okay. Another question for you, too, is, I think, I think I've asked this before, but, albeit a slight advantage, i- is there an advantage to, uh, funding the pay as you go into the trust, even though it just goes in and out?
I mean, not really. I mean, I think it's more of an administrative hassle to some extent than anything else. Maybe if we told you we were gonna be funding, you know, ten million a year and taking out three, then maybe from a, a tracking standpoint, it has value. Or most of the people I'm dealing with in your situation, they're, they're paying in three and a half and taking out three, I don't think you're getting enough inherent value.
Really, okay, okay.
I, I just wanna follow up on Tom's first question. So later on in the agenda is when we'll be approving the OPEB trust. That's gonna point five trustees. You know, when you, when we talk about a funding policy, I guess the question is, who's really the right board to come up with that? The Warren Committee, I know, has a practice. Warren Committee's not a policymaking body, or they make recommendations to town meeting, but they're not elected, and they're, they're really not the right body to be a policymaking body. So I wonder if that's something that we should have, you know, once we approve this trust, we'll have the trustees in place, they have their first meeting, one of their things will be to have an investment policy that they come up with. Maybe they should, would it be proper, I guess, for the trustees to recommend a funding policy, I think to this point, which would be the appropriate-
Yeah, they have the right-
Policymaking Board, in terms of the town's resources that can be funded into the trust, but the trustees that we are contemplating under this OPEB trust would be the town administrator, the chair of this board, the town accountant, the treasurer, and I think the assistant town administrator, which is a vacant position right now. Is that the right, how have you seen it, Parker? Have you seen other communities have trustees make recommendations to the board?
It's usually a select board, usually, as internal finance folks to town generally develop policy, they bring to the board, and then the board will, and the ultimate approval.
Yeah, we would, I agree that we would be the ones to adopt it, but I wonder if it would make sense for the trustees, since a lot of it is town management, to be the ones to consider this question of the funding policy, make some kind of a recommendation.
Yeah, I mean, that probably makes sense, I would tell you, what I tell folks is, there's not one size fits all for a funding plan. You know, in your guys' case, it might be five hundred dollars, and then increasing it whatever, some percentage of the budget, whatever. I have other folks who are putting a certain amount of money, they say our pension will be funded in twenty thirty-four, that will roll that money over in twenty thirty-four and beyond, but someone backloaded funding policy, but again, it gets you there. I have other folks who are just leveling it out over time, I have other folks who are funding the normal costs, there's a lot of different ways you can do this. As I always tell folks, it comes down to, what are the capital needs of the town? It's easy for me, as an outsider, to go and say, oh, you guys should fund X. Well, I don't have to pay the bills, I don't have to explain why we can't afford a new fire truck or new school, so, as I always tell folks, if you could take that half a million dollars and, you know, and send some employer to come into town to bring in, you know, eight hundred new jobs, well, that's a great buy, it's a lot more sense of, more sense of putting it here. So you guys know better where the money is best used, wherever you get the highest rate of return, the OPEB trust is a good place for that. But again, it's, the ultimate amounts of that trust is really you folks as an organization or as a town now.
I never really thought about that, but that, I mean, that, that is also a funding policy, the fact that when we fully fund the pension liability in two thousand twenty, whatever, that additional amount, we're always, already planning on it going-
That's right, yes.
So that really, and we could, we could adopt that as a form of policy.
But the thing is, what we've done in those situations, under your example, we take the five hundred dollars in a year through twenty twenty-four, or whatever it is, and we'd show the projected numbers in twenty twenty-four in your pension, say it's eight million dollars, to pick a number, then we show eight million dollars in twenty twenty-four throughout.
Yep.
And then we could show S and P or Moody's or whomever, okay, in twenty forty-six, we achieved full funding, we have a schedule that shows it, so at least, and again, the schedule doesn't commit you to anything, 'cause future town councils can say, those guys in twenty fifteen were crazy, I haven't turned on. But, you know, the point is, it shows you have a pathway to get there.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions? All right, thanks, Parker.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Item seven on the agenda is, again, Amy. Can't get away from us today. And this is a discussion of the, the two thousand fifteen audit conducted by Powers and Sullivan, and you have Dick Sullivan here.
And we also have-
We may as well have the rest of the crew come up, because you're the ones who did all the work.
Pretty much true. Behind me is Katie Sanneese, who is the supervisor on the job, and Dan Rice, who is the senior on the job, and they, they carry the bulk of the road, who are getting this thing done. That was a pretty interesting topic. Yeah, it is. It's, it's kinda dominated a lot of my exit conferences, too, but, not only the OPEB, but also the Gatsby sixty-eight. Let me just tell you what I'm thinking of doing, and if there's something you wanna go and dive into, is more than happy to do so.
Okay.
I kinda like to tell you how the schedule went, how the job went. Then what I like to do is, I don't really anticipate you spending a lot of time reading them, but I want you to know what's new in there, and things that if I was in your shoes, I'd like to be aware of in case somebody asks a question.
Sure.
Then after that, just kinda talk about some of the highlights, the key balance sheet elements, my take on how the year went, and give you an idea of the overall results. That'll get us through the financial statements, a brief comment on the federal awards report, and then we'll go into the management letter after that.
Okay.
Great. First things to talk about is that the books are closed at a fairly quick timeframe here. We actually started our audit, year-end audit, the middle of August, which doesn't get much better from the standpoint of being able to get in and begin the process of doing the audit. And I mention that because I know Amy puts a lot of effort in trying to get the books closed efficiently and also accurately. And what we do is, we, not before we come in at year-end, and sometime in the springtime, we'll also come in and work on things that I consider not to be specific to the balance sheet. Uh, we'll look at the budget, we'll do long-term debt, 'cause most of the time, all the borrowing has been done. We try to get as much of the single audit completed as we can, and then because of the standards that we have, we have to test about a hundred to a hundred and twenty transactions relative to revenue, expenditures, payroll, and also called journal entries. So we try to get all that done, what do we call the prelim work. And then we come in at year-end, and it's basically bang away at the balance sheet, do the analytics, and take care of anything that we didn't take care of in the spring. The highlights in this report, the biggest thing that's new in this report is something called Gatsby sixty-eight. And what that was, in the past, you met an, what was called an annual required contribution to the pension plan, to your pension plan, which Milton has. And as long as you made that, there was no recognition of a liability. You, you knew what the ARC was, you paid it, and there was no, on the balance sheet, there was no presentation of that liability. There was a good vetting of it and disclosure of it in the notes, but not on the front of the balance sheet. That changed with Gatsby sixty-eight. And what they came up with is something called the net pension liability, where they took all the assets of the plan, they took the liabilities of the plan, and they said, this is what the town owes, as of this date, which is June thirtieth. That number was twenty-three point six million dollars. It's basically blew a hole in your balance sheet. I like to call, I think Gatsby's the elephant in the room, Gatsby sixty's the baby elephant right now. So, um, the other thing, too, is, and he talked about it at length, you know, your, OPEB liability on the books right now is forty-five million dollars. You have a total liability of ninety-five, which I think is what he mentioned, which didn't go up much from the previous actuarial evaluation, but it's still a sizable chunk of change. Now, the new thing, and it was highlighted in the report, is you establish the OPEB trust. It's, but the numbers that are in there is kinda symbolic.
Right.
But I think it's a great idea, because it means you're committed to something. One of the things that I heard mentioned was having a plan, and what Stan and Porus likes to hear, what Moody's wants to hear, and what everything that he provided you, I would have said the same. And the other thing that I think you caught on at the end is your funding schedule, if you maintained it, right now, your retirement system's eighty-two percent funded, as of the last evaluation, you know, you're scheduled to be done in two thousand twenty-four. That's not a long way away.
Right.
So with a, with some effort to do short-term gap, if you wanna call it, little funding, and then diverting that appropriation, and we're going to the pension and to the OPEB trust, I think that's a very viable plan, that a lot of communities are saying, but they don't have the first step started yet, like you have. And I think that's something that you'd, that I would definitely consider, I mean, you guys have a great rating, a triple A, and I think you'll maintain that with a plan like that. Another thing relative to the year, you also refunded some debt. This is the second year in a row that you refunded some debt. I think last year, you did a, a refunding that saved total debt service of, debt service of one point eight million dollars. This year, you did one, which is also gonna save another one point one million dollars. That's all that school debt that was taken out when the rates were higher, and you're taking advantage of the lower rates. I just like the fact that somebody's paying attention, and it's getting done, and that's important, because it's certainly, if you can save over the course of two years, almost four million dollars on your budget, and divert that to another process, that's, that's a very good thing. The other thing I'd like to talk about, too, is just some of your capital asset activity. There wasn't a lot in there this year, you spent just under five million dollars for an array of things, but the biggest thing was some roof repairs, and some infrastructure, you bought some cemetery land, you bought some vehicles, and you also did, the enterprise fund spent about a million, five million, six in infrastructure assets. There was some meters in there, too, I think. So that's really, if somebody had said, what's the difference between this year and last year? Those are some of the highlights that I wanted to mention to you, with the biggest being Gatsby sixty-eight. Gatsby sixty-eight took your pension footnote from about three quarters of the page to four and a half pages, with all the disclosures that were necessary in there. It's a, it was a bear of, I gotta tell you, as a firm, you know, we do, you know, probably ninety of these things, as a firm, we probably had twenty meetings on this thing, because every time we thought we had it, we didn't. And then, and finally, we got the full disclosures down, but there was a lot of work relative to it, and of course, you guys are fully GAAP compliant. The balance sheet, when you get down to it, your biggest assets are obviously cash, we've talked about OPEB, and we've talked about the net pension liability, your other biggest liability is bonds and notes payable, which at year-end was thirty-seven million dollars. Your cash investments was forty-one million dollars, and the retirement system, which I mentioned was eighty-two percent funded, has about two hundred and nine million dollars worth of assets as of December thirty-first fourteen. From a performance standpoint, the general fund essentially broke even, you lost five hundred and ninety-five thousand, but on a budget your size, that's, that's actually not bad. But on a budget your size, that's, that's actually not bad. This was actually a better performance than you had anticipated, because based on the numbers I saw, you expected to use between overlay and free cash about $2.7 million, which means you didn't have to use hardly any of it. And that was primarily the result that you had better-than-expected collections of $1.6 million, and there were some turnbacks of a little over $500,000. So the way I look at it, if my calculus is correct, you probably used about $500,000 worth of free cash, which is a lot better than the $2.7 million that you planned for. Unassigned fund balance, that's one of the things that the S&amp;P looks at, and it's part of your reserves. And unassigned means this is stuff that hasn't been dedicated or committed to anything. There's no encumbrances or articles associated with a restriction on its use. It decreased by $1.6 million. And that was primarily because you had planned to use $2.8 million of your budget, and you also had some expenditures that, it was basically just the way you planned things to go. And you moved some money, you transferred some money also into the staff fund, and into the, the OPEB trust fund. Your balance overall is still 9% of your expenditures. And I've talked about this in the past, that if you can be, 5% is the lowest you want to go. As soon as you start getting to the 10%, you're in really good shape. So you're at 9%. Now, last year we were at 11.5%, which I was extremely happy about. And if you, I know a lot, you've been around for a while with the Warren Committee, I think it was, and we know how low your fund balance was at one time, where it was like in single digits, and the effort that you've made to get it to that point. I'm just highlighting this because it's kind of tough to see the fund balance go down. And don't forget, you had a bad snow and ice year too, which is going to be raised. But I would just say, if you can maintain your reserves, and I know you have some policies related to that, work hard at doing so, because that is the, that is one of the, in terms of planning policies and procedures that are documented, maintaining adequate reserves and/or if you use them, having a plan to bring them back, is what S&amp;P really, really looks at. And the enterprise funds, they basically showed some gains, but most of the time that's because the enterprise funds have to have a profit. They, they're not like the fund-based statements where, and then essentially the profit they have is used to pay the principal on the, on the debt. And that's what they did in FY '15. So from a financial statement perspective, and like I said, the report expanded now to 73 pages. This is, the only thing that we really own of this is called the opinion, and it was called unmodified, which is the best it can get. You know, Amy gives us a lot of information. We do support the process of getting these things to be GAAP compliant. I can't expect anybody not to do that, because this is what we do, and this happens once a year for you folks, so that makes sense. But I was very happy the fact that we tend to have a deadline where we try to get things done, because we're kind of lined up like Logan Airport on, on the day before Thanksgiving with a-
That's not a good term to use.
Oh, okay, sorry. We're very busy. And so, so the fact that we can come in, get things done, have a very efficient, and the people that we're working with have a sense of urgency is important to us. We like the fact that when we ask for, we have a question, we don't have to wait days for the answer, we wait maybe an hour or two. One of the things that, after we go through all this, we do look to see if should there be an adjustment made to the books. There were no adjustments proposed to your records, so what you get, get on a monthly basis, a quarterly basis, or whatever it is, what was sent to DOR was accurate. And we really didn't have any internal control issues. I'll touch on one when we get to the management letter. So that's the financial statements. On the federal award side, and this will be quick, this is something that you have to have done. It's called an A133 audit. It's done because you spend more than $500,000 of federal funds. And what you did is you spent $1.7 million. We have to test the major programs, which in this year was the special education group of grants, and also school lunch. That totaled two-point, I'm sorry, your total expenditure was $2.3 million. We audited 1.7. There were no findings, and there were no question costs. There is one compliance finding, which I'm going to discuss when I get to the management letter, because if you have an element of what we call potential internal control issue, you have to mention in the single audit. But from a pure understanding of federal grant management, it was done well, and there were no issues. Okay, the management letter. This is, this is a thing that we do own 100% of, and other than, you know, the opinions. The management letter this year included a significant deficiency. Now, I don't know, I wouldn't expect you, but last year we had this similar comment, and we kind of gave a, if you don't mind, a shot across the ball, says if it's still there next year, we've got to go to the next level, and that's what happened with this one. My understanding is this account has essentially been closed, and there's only one outstanding check left. That's my understanding when I was talking with the treasurer. So that's the goal that we have, to get rid of this account. And the fact that it's, we call it a significant efficiency, is that essentially, the way the municipality is supposed to work is every single thing that happens in the treasurer's office has to be recognized somewhere else. That's the checks and balances that you have to have. And this one account didn't have anything, other than the control of the treasurer. So we wanted that reporting aspect, we wanted to get into ZOBREO, we wanted to make sure that there's not another set of eyes, just the normal checks and balances you would expect of it, that happens for every other part of the operation to happen here. So that's what happened there. Prior year comments, we had 10. We're kind of, I would say it wasn't necessarily a great year for resolution. I've only got one fully resolved. There's a lot of stuff here. I know we're working on the purchase order system. I know we're working on compensated absences. The student activity account, my understanding, did that get into ZOBREO? I thought it did, maybe.
No, I would say no.
Okay. That's supposed to be getting there. We talked about police details getting better. Essentially, all of these things have been around for a couple of years. And the CPO is something I would definitely consider as having a priority, only because the inspector general's already, it's a big deal to have a chief procurement officer. And then, the start of the student activity accounts, the numbers are not large, but the, the liability of, let's say the, the risk that that could go wrong is high. And if something did go wrong, it's above the fold. And that's not something, that's why we kind of put a little emphasis on that, when it relates to all the ones that are on, not resolved just yet. They are, some of these have had evidence on, to them. If I could make one more too, the withholding accounts, those got to be reconciled. If, I don't care if they're debits or credits, if there's money that, if they're not washing out to zero after a site, a transaction cycle, there's something missing. If there's money in there, and appropriation's not, is probably being hit, that shouldn't be hit. If they're in a deficit, there's probably more going against that than there should against appropriation. You just want to get a control over that. Finally, we offered two comments, new ones. The payroll and vendor reconciliations are done by the bank, and that's, that's pretty good, but they have to be monitored. They have to be overseen, they have to be validated. And we don't see that happening with these two accounts. And so that's why, that's a comment for the new one. Let me just give you an example, what I mentioned in the community. There was a, a client of ours. They, some outsider hacked the, the vendor account. It was being reconciled by the bank, and the treasurer was not looking at the account. The bank actually sent notices, that what is this, what is this? And the treasurer didn't respond until they finally sent the notice to the town manager. And it turned out somebody had stole about $72,000 from the vendor account. Now, they were made whole, but the idea is, just because you think the bank's reconciling, you've got to still have your fingers in the pie to take care of it. And so that's, I'm only mentioning that because this is a comment, and it's not just for Milton, it happens in a lot of our communities, but that one thing that just happened this year made it clear to me is one of the reasons why.
Yeah. And the other problem I've seen with those, they're only as good as internally tell the bank what happened.
That's right.
Avoid your check and don't tell them, then.
If your, if your wire is wrong, or you got a manual check, or some, something blew up, I mean, we actually had a client who had outstanding checks on their reconciliation that wasn't for them. It was another bank client. So you can't just sit there and, you know, assume everything's okay.
Assume, yeah.
Right. And finally, it was mentioned earlier, Gatsby 75. Gatsby 75 is what's going to happen, is they're going to be the Gatsby 68 for FY '18.
Right.
And that, that $95 million liability that you have right now, that is, the, the actual unfunded liability is going to appear on your balance sheet. Now, I said this before when Gatsby 68 was coming in, and we were, we were talking about it last year. The thing about these numbers and appearing on the balance sheet is they've been fully vetted already. Your AAA rating, they know what your actuarial liability is for your OPEB. They knew what your actuarial liability was for your unfunded pension plan. But they are drawing attention by putting on the face of the statements that, how are we going to have a plan to deal with this stuff, rather than have it buried in the footnotes? I mean, if you get that far, it's amazing in most financial statements. But now things are read on the very first page of your financial statements. And you see this big negative down below that says unrestricted fund balance is a huge negative, and you're saying, "Well, I think if I was a business, I'd probably be bankrupt."
Right.
So that's what the, that's what the whole process of this is. I think what's happened in the municipal world is the Gatsby's taking what they've been doing in, let's call it the for-profit sector for years, and they're taking some of those elements and bringing them into the municipal environment. So I, that's a synopsis of several hundred hours' worth of work, and I'm more than happy to take any questions if you have any.
The significant deficiency tech was a, was significant deficiency in the, the yellow book report.
Yes.
But not the, not, not the A133 internal controller.
No, because the yellow book, there's two pieces. The yellow book is based on the internal control environment.
Yep.
The yellow book is on the commis, I mean, the A133 is the administration of the grants themselves.
Right.
So they don't have to cross over.
Yeah. Did it have an impact on the-
Right.
Okay. Any questions?
It sounded, Dick, from what you're saying, that once, there's one check outstanding, and once the account is closed, is that the current plan, that that account will be closed?
My understanding, now I can't speak to what Amy knows, but Jim called me, I spoke with Jim the other day, and he told me that the student activity accounts was getting on the books, and I gave him some additional recommendations as to how that should happen. And he told me that he had one account, one checking account left, and he was going to close the account. One outstanding check that, he had issued about three months ago. And as far as I know, no further deposits have been made to that account.
Okay. I thought the student activity account was a different issue.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were talking about the-
I'm talking about the significant deficiency.
That, that is not the student activity account. That is a-
That's what I didn't think it was.
What he did is, what was happening, and among other things, if he had a receipt that he had to split between, say, a collector and something else, because there was a tax title involved, he would deposit in this account.
Yeah.
Then he would cut two checks to where they should go. And there was also some copy of money being, going in there, or copies being paid in there. There was some activity, and I can't remember the number, but it was a significant, like, we saw like 30 transactions in one month in July. And you can't have that. It's, it's, whatever happens on, on Jim's side has to happen on the, the general ledger's side.
So that's a good question. So that, so this will still be an issue that needs further addressing beyond just dealing with one final check and then closing an account?
Well, if he closes the account, then we don't have this, this issue anymore. It goes away, because technically, everything he takes in now should be flowing through his cashbook and the ZOBREO system.
Okay.
That's, that's my understanding of where it's headed.
Okay. And some of these others that were prior year comments, not all of them, but some of the 10 also look like they can be addressed once the, once the new financial software is fully up and running, everyone's comfortable with it and used to it.
And I know Amy's-
And then some follow-up work is going to be done.
And I know there's been, yes, I know there's been some attempts on the comp apps. Sometimes, I'll be honest with you, if I, if you guys say it can't be done right now, these things can be pulled, but a lot of times, once, once, once this thing gets alive in a document, you can't really pull it out until it's been resolved for the most part. But if there's some dialogue we should have that says, you know, maybe this isn't the way to go, we're going to have to stay with our existing system, we know the risk involved, then that's okay too. But I just, we just have to have that discussion.
And Dick, you mentioned centralization of procurement process.
Yeah.
That's a, that's a big one.
That is a huge one, because what, what, this one here is responsible technically for every contract in the, in the town, all right? Which includes all the departments, including the school. And a lot of times, things happen in isolated islands. You know, contracts are being signed, the money may be there, but they, you're not aware of it. And, you know, that and the fact that you've got to make sure that the policies of MGL30 or whatever policies you have are being followed, the three quotes, whether they be verbal or written, all that stuff has got to be adequately documented. We actually test for it. And we test for it in the big, for the big guys, not necessarily the small guys. But you need to see those three quotes if you're going to go buy a $45,000 police vehicle. You know, you need that stuff, because in the world we live in, municipality says that's what you're supposed to do. And, and the chief procurement officer has the ability to issue, make other people like assistants or whatever, but that chief procurement officer should be the person that gets, everything flows through, and has the ability to sign off prior to the finalization of that process.
And it creates better efficiencies.
Thank you very much, though.
What you have happening now too, and it's, it's human nature, that, well, I can get the three quotes, or I can just go off the state bid list, and I don't have to do it. Well, it's not necessarily the best price. It's just convenience.
That's right. That's right. But at least, let's call the form over substance rule.
Right.
State, the state bid list, which usually does a good job, is a form pop. The substance might be you could do better by going with three quotes.
Exactly.
And from my end, what I find is, you know, I could buy something from the vendor, and then somebody over at the schools could buy something from the vendor, and individually, it doesn't meet the threshold, but you need to look at it combined. And if there isn't a central person looking at it that way, it, it can get missed. And the other thing from my perspective is I'm, I'm often seeing these things after the fact, when the invoice is coming in to pay it. And I'll say, a lot of, I've got, a lot of the department heads trained that if it's not a contract that I've signed, that they'll send in all the paperwork that proves that they follow 30B, so that I have it when the auditors come in, and that I can review it then. But a lot of times, it's after the fact, whereas a CPO would be looking at it before the purchase is made, before the contract is signed. So.
Well, I think the good news, we should note for the public who are watching, is that the town administrator has the school-town consolidation committee, which has been working for over a year now.
That's right.
And is looking at this issue, and hopefully will be making a recommendation very soon.
And town government study committee is looking at it as well, so.
Which is great news.
You have questions?
The, I think the audit, you know, the, the audit committee, Milton has an audit committee.
Yes.
But it has changed, they, we had a warrant article put forward by the town government study committee last year, was based on the DOR's report to us, that we reconstitute that committee. So I think we need to follow. I know the town administrator has followed up with the town moderator, because the moderator is one who appoints that committee, to see if we can get some final appointments. It's supposed to have five members. So I, I think, you know, Tom, would it make sense for you to have a follow-up conversation with the moderator, to see if we can try to move that along?
Yeah.
Because that's, I served on an audit committee when I was on the hospital board, and it's an important committee to have. And I think the audit committee, working with the accountant and working, the, the change is that the audit committee actually would be the ones who would be involved with the, the audit team right from the start, in terms of selecting them, hiring them, and, and working with them throughout the process.
Yep.
But the audit committee, I think, once it's reconstituted, can really help address some of these issues timely, and have some, have a, have a role to play that's a little bit different than what our role might be, and maybe move some of these along so that we can get them off the prior year comments. Obviously, we don't want prior year comments to continue staying, and that'd become a significant deficiency, or even worse, a material weakness down the road.
Right.
I think it would also be helpful, Tom, if you was the chair, might be willing to talk with the town treasurer, and whoever, there's some other departments, the school departments, that are involved in some of these prior year comments, and see what we can do to move this along. The town administrator, I know, has, has done this, but there's been off, we have a vacancy in the office, there's a lot on her plate right now. So I think maybe if we have the chair of our board.
Yep.
Talk with both the moderator and some of these other elected boards and officials.
Yep. I have talked to the moderator a couple of times about it, and he's having trouble finding people, which I knew he would. I mean, it, it's a committee that they want, you know, basically people that have a proper understanding of internal controls and everything else, and basically you're talking about a CPA, you know, or some, or somebody that's served on a lot of boards in the past.
Well, we have three good people in the audit committee now.
Now, right.
And I, I think for two others. Maybe hearing-
I did talk to, he said, he said he was having a terrible time trying to-
Yeah. Maybe we can try to help with references for people who have a financial background, who might see this here, this may be read about in the Milton Times with Laura Griffin sitting in the room.
Yep.
And maybe we'll get some volunteers who might be willing to serve, so.
But-
Might help move along, move the process line, really, we should try to have that in place for next year.
True. Absolutely. And, and, and some of those people from the current committee were, well, they were all invited here tonight, but because it was a limited short notice, they, they had scheduling conflicts, weren't able to make it. But, but they certainly were concerned about the management letter comments. I know, got a couple of emails on those, and-
And that was my fault. I dropped the ball in inviting them, so they didn't get invited till like last Thursday. So I take full responsibility for that, and-
It's a busy time of the year, unfortunately, but the good news is they've been involved in the process, and they, they usually are able to come.
Yeah. Yeah. Good, great.
Great.
Thank you very much, Dick.
Thanks, Dick.
Have a good one.
You too.
Do we need a motion to accept this thing, or?
No.
No? Okay. I know some places do. Okay, item eight on the agenda, is a discussion of the Stormwater Utility Enterprise Fund with Joe Lynch, our DPW director, and Ian Cook from NEPRA, and Julie Conroy from MIPC.
Julie has a flashpoint for the PowerPoint?
Yep.
In the revision. Julie, can you do about what would you prefer to sit on that side or this side?
Doesn't matter. I'll sit here. Okay. Do you know if you can help with the location?
Ian?
And Julie, I just want to set the stage on what we're talking about, just so that people out there in TV land understand it a little bit before we dive into this thing.
Sure. Did you want to start?
Oh, Joe, you can do it too.
I'll just make a, just a quick synopsis for those folks at home who can understand how we got to where we are tonight. So for the past 12 years, the Massachusetts State and New England as a region have been involved in National Pollution Discharge Elimination System, NIPD's, as we refer to it as an acronym. And that was a five-year permit, which we are now in the seventh year of an extension beyond the first five years, which is just by default. It's just rolled over, as they've been, EPA and the state's been working on rolling out the new permit. So the new permit now is out for public comment. We hear with great reliability, it will be out in official early January. So all the speculation of what this new permit might look like is how old-
January 16?
Of 16.
Okay.
How old it might be is now coming home to roost. We've been talking stormwater for a long time and, you know, every community is concerned with it, the region is concerned with it, and the folks at NEPRA and the folks at MIPC with a member of a consortium of, what, nine other communities? Nine other communities applied two years ago for Community Innovation Challenge Grant through Administration of Finance, often through the Commonwealth. And we received that grant. We offered some great innovation by partnering, looking at stormwater as a whole and those things that we can do simply as a region, you know, without repeating and duplicating efforts efficiently. And then beyond that is what, you know, sort of outreach, what each community would be looking to provide to administer is the existing permit and the new one that we anticipated coming out. Second part of that grant was to offer two communities as a pilot. Milton was one of the two offered and us and Dedham or no? Us and Dedham were the two pilots. And the result of that was to look more specifically at each of those two communities, not together but individually, and understand what are the things that you're doing, what are the things you ought to be doing under the existing permit? There's a gap involved and how do you fund that? And more importantly, it is then extrapolate what might this new permit look like? What is that gap? And, you know, in the first year, it's a five-year program we expected to, five-year permit, we expected to ramp up programmatically year after year and not all be dumped on the plate in the first year. So the effort of that pilot program was culminated in a report issued to the town back in April that all the selectmen have. And it was still general, given us a range of possibilities, things that we could consider. And again, we're talking about affordability in what a lot of communities across the country have done, particularly those in relatively new and developing communities, they've established much like a water company or a water enterprise, if you will, or sewer collection, separate stormwater utility companies and, you know, and assess fees on some sort of calculated basis and so forth. New England being as Yankee as it is and as conservative as it has been, reluctant to change and as, as we speak today, there are only seven communities in Massachusetts that have a stormwater utility. Only a couple of them are towns and most others are cities. However, there's about 40 and 50 communities that are on the cusp of rolling it out because of this new permit.
Right. I suppose we should say too that, to that end, that throughout history, stormwater, there's not been a tremendous amount of expenditures towards stormwater. That has ramped up with the first NIPDAS permitting process where there was actually some, you know, significant money spent by cities and towns to monitor and control discharges of stormwater and it's just continuing to grow. So it's continuing to be a problem in terms of.
Yeah, historically, when I graduated high school in 1976 and went to an engineering program and that was shortly after the EPA itself was created, you saw the first influx of, you know, people concerned about the environment and concerned about water quality. And it really didn't mean much. That it really meant keep the streets from flooding and send it into the rivers and lakes and you wouldn't have a job if we didn't do something as brash as that. Because in essence, ended up polluting our waterways and lakes and streams. And over time, as communities were pressed for challenges, you know, some of the things that kind of got compressed and compressed and ignored over the years was in fact maintenance of your stormwater systems and the ability to cleanse the water before you're sending it to these receiver bodies of water. So NIPDAS came out recognizing years ago, the larger municipalities, the cities, you know, under tier one, had to do things, had to do something about it. And like I said, 12 years ago, it affected all of the communities in Massachusetts with the exception of the ultra-rural ones in the Berkies and whatnot. And then now it's really going to affect all the communities and even be that much more innovative and that much more demanding on how it is we do things and what those things that we must be doing. So yeah, that's how this thing has evolved and really has gained momentum, really, all in the past decade after, after a full quarter century of doing nothing, doing the wrong things. So that's how we got to where we are. And we've all seen this arise looming and we've speculated what the permit might look like. So where we are now is we know what the permit's going to look like. We don't expect many changes. It's going to be issued in January. This report still was issued in April, is still based on some of the things that we thought were going to be needed. They don't differ much. But we've set net locally a number of times and most recently, last week with Tom Hurley and Emery via telephone and John Thompson, our town engineer, and town council to try to get our hands around what does it mean to create a utility. We simply put, much as we consider our water and sewer utilities, the idea is to establish a utility, establish a funding, a fee based on some macro basis, assign that fee to property owners in a fair way, collect that fee and to dedicate that fee for the purposes of carrying out the mission. Not to make money, not to lose money, but to support the effort. That's the concept. With that in mind, Julie went back and we probably ruined a full nine days of her life and tried to rewrite these things very specifically, very demanding requirements that we were at, to really look at this of where we think this wants to go because, want to go because we really think that this is something we want to bring to special town meetings later on. I've already submitted a draft article. We want to be able to do this in February to create this utility if that's what the town ultimately votes to do. It helps us understand in the budgeting process what part of that stormwater liability comes off the tax rolls, freeing up that money for other purposes and how much of it gets assigned to the fee. And that's really the concept here. So I justify your job. What do we miss with regards to water quality?
I think you did a great job. I mean, certainly there is, all of our communities are facing some significant additional financial demands as a result of this permit. And a lot of our communities are having conversations about how do they want to pay for that? Unfortunately, it becomes not so much a conversation about whether you want to pay for it, although our effort to do things on a regional basis is trying to gain some efficiencies and hold down some costs. But it's really a question about how do you want to pay for it? And I think that, you know, the bulk of what we have to say tonight is from Julie, who is the author of this draft report. And I think she's really looking for, I think she wants to explain the report to you a little bit and get some feedback from you about some input she needs from you in order to finalize it, to make it a product that's useful for the town.
Okay, great.
So as Julie's passing out handouts, let me just say that the report written in April, again, was generalized based on the direction of our recent meetings and in the meeting just last week. Julie's gone back and done some very, very specific analysis and assuming that some sort of consensus amongst the board of selectmen will likely result in a reissuance of the Milton portion of the pilot, you know, so long as, you know, you're agreeing with the methodology that we've selected.
Okay, so thank you so much. Joe, you really outlined exactly why we're here. I'd like to give you a little bit of detail as to what we've taken a look at in terms of some options for this fee. I start out just pointing out to you that there are some very specific requirements within the municipal, the MS4 permit that's to become at any moment out for comment, I believe in January, actually. And the highlighted items that you see on the screen are actually things that are, sort of go above and beyond, if you will, the current permit requirements, the 2003 permit requirements. And these are the areas that I've talked to Joe a lot about in terms of, you know, where does the town stand on its current work in these areas and what should we be thinking about for some additional resources to make sure that you're complying fully with the new permit in these areas? And so then on the next screen, this, kind of give you a flavor of the types of things that we're thinking about. What are we looking to fund with this type of fee? Fee, I just also want to pause for a moment. I've been using the term fee mainly because the term utility, although they're somewhat interchangeable, we've been viewing the way that this funding source is managed as a utility. It can be a utility, it can be an existing body, department within the town governance. So it's not, we're trying to be very flexible in terms of how we work with the community as to how they want to implement this. So this fee, thinking about what do you need and also thinking really outside of the box, meaning, you know, there may be staffing needs, there may be some infrastructure needs, some other planning needs, et cetera, that you're not currently considering. Maybe you'd want to hire a couple of new staff members that have a particular function that maybe are going to handle stormwater monitoring, what you may not be doing now. So really thinking long-term as to what this revenue source would, what the needs would be. And the next.
Actually, first, which is just so I can be clear to the, to the board of selectmen and the folks at home and particularly the water committee members who might be listening, when we established our budgets for FY '16, we created stormwater as a separate budget for exactly that purpose, to segregate and to understand the value. And in this year's effort, we've took our non-contingent, in our contingent and looked at exactly these goals and laid them out there. So, you know, the answer to the question is right in front of the folks when they can go to vote.
Right. Yeah, and I think it's important for everybody to understand too, these costs are already being incurred. So it's not like we're, you know, I mean, they will increase with the new requirements, but their costs are already there, already in the budget that.
I said that last week. We have done a great job as a community historically. We're ahead of a lot of communities. We're not doing everything. By full admission, nobody's doing everything. But we ought to be. And so this, under the non-contingent budget, it's to get us up to where we should be under the first permit and the contingent budget just takes us up to year one.
Yep.
So this is giving you a flavor of how we were looking at what your existing expenditures are and your revenue needs coming forward. As Joe mentioned, that, you know, there's an amount, and this is an approximate, an amount that we used in terms of what you are currently spending and what that gap might be. And so looking at the permit year one, you know, we, again, factoring in, if you continue with the, factoring in these specific needs, and again, for regulation and enforcement, which would be the next frame showing you off the screen there. But what these particular categories include, and this is all written up in the report and we can certainly have further conversations about what each of these categories entails, but these are the main categories expenditures and just factoring in sort of, what we did here was just sort of a doubling, you know, of what we found to be the deficit between the upcoming permit and existing requirements. And so in the next, after these two additional descriptions, we'll go to the next frame, which is, back one if you can. If not, then I'm just going to go through it. Okay. So what is not shown, but I'll just talk to you generally, is just essentially some considerations that you need to take into account and we'll get to this analysis portion. The considerations are really items that you just need to think through in terms of program costs. There's nothing visual to see, so no, folks at home, don't worry. We're just making sure that as you enter into this discussion, you're really considering things of, concepts for the fee, like for example, it obviously needs to be as equitable as possible, but easy to understand. And so as we move forward and I provide you with the analysis, that's what we hope, is that we've been able to show you a few options that would be so. Also, this concept is really taking into account that, okay, yes, there is an area, which I will then move to here, that's shown, where there are both areas of the community that are within, you know, direct connection to the municipal system, the storm sewer system. However, there are other areas that may not be. And this type of long-term funding sources, broad fee could cover both. And this is a question in terms of how you want to implement it. That's something for later discussion, but suffice to say that the analysis includes all parcels in town. So regardless of its direct connection or not within the system, and that is most definitely allowed under state law. So now on.
I do want to just pause for a moment. You made reference to storm sewer. For those folks at home, we've been real careful to differentiate between our sewer, our sanitary sewer is completely isolated and separated for any stormwater aspect. Our stormwater system is isolated from that and is unique to itself. So the jargon in engineering, we've referred to it as a storm sewer, but we really call it our stormwater drainage system. It has nothing to do with sewage.
And just so everybody understands, our sewage obviously goes through sewer treatment and.
That's correct.
But our stormwater empties into wetlands and rivers and streams.
And there are communities that actually still have them combined, but we have not and we're very lucky to not have them combined and they are segregated.
Very lucky. So the analysis as to, you know, how do we determine what this fee should, these fee options could be? Starting out is just to determine, so we call this, I have to realize the jargon there, this impervious analysis. It's really the hardened areas of each parcel that water can't recharge into the ground. It's areas like pavement, rooftop drainage, even walkways, sidewalks, et cetera, where the water has to run literally off onto other surfaces and in particular, directly into the storm drain system. And so what we're measuring here is essentially what's the extent to this impervious area? What, you know, how, in square footage, how large of an area is this on every parcel in the community? And what I'm showing here is just sort of a visualization of what that impervious would, you know, it looks like. Not to get into too much detail, but essentially, this is done using data that has been collected directly from the town of Milton, which is unique. A lot of times, communities don't have access to do what is a flyover essentially to basically take imagery to show on a townwide basis where these hardened areas are. And you're lucky in the sense that this is something that you have done directly for your community versus maybe an older source of data that you could get from the state. So the accuracy is right out there. I believe that we were looking at this from 2012.
2012 flyover.
So this is, this is good news. What we did is also, you need to take a look at this on the, on the property type. So what type of property are we looking at when we're looking at these imperviousness, these hardened areas? And on the table, I'm just showing that this, these are the types of properties, the classification of properties that we looked at and whether it was included in the analysis. Essentially, pretty much all of these land use categories were included, aside from your forest land, obviously, that is already pervious, so water is able to recharge there. And anything where there was a personal property element, there weren't any found. So those were not included, but all other categories were. So the options that we reported in this initial report done in April are these four categories of fee options. The first, the flat fee is in a talus, is actually because we are not recommending that we move forward on that. That's basically a cost. So you're taking a look at your revenue need and essentially dividing that by the number of parcels you have in the community. And it is a flat fee, no matter what your impervious surface is. And so that's something that is, you know, very difficult and not entirely equitable in terms of what a property is contributing. So we're not, we're not recommending that. Graduated fee, there's different ways of class, of terming this, but this, we call it a graduated fee because it's looking at what a fee could be in each of the land use categories. But it is an average of, based on the average of impervious surface for that land use category. And I'll explain how we calculate that in the next, but I would like to mention first the proportional fee. That is where we take, we determine what that fee could be based exactly on the impervious surface of that exact parcel. So every single parcel within the community. And again, the good news is that you do have very recent data, so there's not a lot of concern about anything that maybe was redeveloped or altered. However, there are some drawbacks and I will mention those to each of these fees and one being for proportionals, there is a little bit more maintenance on that database, if you will, of length of parcels. Distributed fee, I'm not going to talk about tonight. That was something that we looked at, a way to see if there's a sort of widening of the fee, sort of altering the high, the very extreme high and the very extreme lows of what fees will be to see if there's a way to, sort of a statistical analysis essentially to see if that's something that the community might be able to be interested in. However, in this case, we're not recommending that, so I'm not going to explain too much. That is in the report and it shows you a bit of that. The next frame, just giving the folks at home and everyone here, the idea of this tier, you know, for each land classification, how do we determine that? Well, first, we take the average of, the average impervious surface of residential parcel, your sort of standard average residential parcel. What is the average impervious surface on that type of parcel? And that is the basis for the analysis. So it's based on one residential home, an average, and that becomes the equivalent. And this visual is just showing like what exactly does that look like? So again, rooftop areas, a walkway, driveways, anything where water has to run off, it cannot infiltrate. And then the next frame is how do we apply that? So essentially, the, this equivalent is, is what the factor is if, you know, you, if you multiply that. So what I'm showing here is how we calculate the equivalent residential unit, which is just the, you know, the property type, the land use type, what the average impervious is. And you divide that by the average impervious for residential and that determines your multiplying factor. So, you know, for example, for a commercial property, it's, and I'm showing this here, is four times the imperviousness, if you will, of what a residential parcel would be. So, you know, I'm showing how, you know, it's essentially how many of these residential impervious areas would fit within a commercial or in this example, tax exempt. This is just showing you an example and these are numbers in terms of, you know, square footage of impervious that are rounded numbers so that, you know, you can easily see that calculi- calculation.
I think the takeaway on this slide ought to be that recognizing that, you know, residential people in commercial businesses are paying taxes, and in essence have been paying for some share of stormwater as part of their tax bill forever. And the tax exempt properties, in essence, contribute on a residential equivalency unit, far greater impervious area, yet has never borne any of that burden. So this slide demonstrates that in a pretty darn good way, so on a parcel-by-parcel fee basis, you know, some of that burden will be start to be absorbed and carried by those folks who haven't been paid for it in the past, yet contributing to stormwater runoff.
Absolutely. Very, very important point. And the next frame is where I show you how this actually worked out for Milton, in terms of the exact number of parcels, what we've determined to be the equivalent, again, this multiplying factor of, you know, how much more impervious per these land use categories. And all the way to the right, showing what the annual fee for that land use category could be, and what a quarterly fee could be. And then the next frame, and that's, this is the second scenario, which is just funding the gap between what you're currently spending and what the requirements of the new permit would be. And again, all the way over to the right, showing what the, what the annual fee would be for each land use category and what the quarterly fee would be. And these, this information is detailed in the report, so folks are-
One of the problems we have with this calculation is it's, that is the, you know, that eighty-five dollars and twenty cents would be the fee per, for every household, because it's an average. That's not too bad, but the tax exempt property, two thousand four hundred and twenty-eight dollars would be the fee for every exempt property, the smallest one and the largest one, which doesn't, because we don't have that many. I mean, a small church would be paying the same thing as Curry College.
Proportional fee would be a different and more equitable.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yes. So actually, that is a good segue right to, we did take, again, it's still part of what we were calling this graduated fee, because it is by land use category, but we tiered out the residential cap class. And there's many ways of doing this, but we were showing you here these three tiers, if you will, based on the amount of impervious surface this, these types of, each parcel would have. So we have, showing here, you know, anything that is less than two thousand two hundred and sixty-seven square feet of impervious, the average fee would be about seventy dollars annually. The mid, if you will, you know, anything above the two thousand two hundred and sixty-eight up to what we found, and this was a statistical analysis to determine what these tiers should be, up to three thousand three hundred and thirty-one square feet of impervious surface, that rate, that fee would be a hundred and nine dollars. And then the top, so anything above three thousand three hundred and thirty-two square feet of impervious, being a fee annually of two hundred and seventy-two dollars. So there is this way that you can get a little bit more in the precision without going right to every single parcel.
But that, under that, we would have to go out in inventory of the house and figure out where they fall, bottom, middle, or top?
Which we have. We have that information in our-
Based on our GIS, it's that accurate.
Yes.
When we left the slide that showed the doubling and quadrupling effect, that was generalized, but anything beyond that is now based on real numbers and based on our mapping.
Yes. We were able to, just a note on the methodology, we connected the most recent parcel data from the assessor's office here in town with the flyover for the impervious cover, so there's their overlap, and we were able to have those right there in the right, in the same sheet, which gives us land use class, classifications, et cetera. Here is just a, I'd say a smattering, if you will, of the proportional fee, and that is because, obviously, we can't show you a spreadsheet of, you know, I think it was up to two hundred pages of every property, but this is giving you a sense for these, we are showing you here the four categories. We didn't break up residential further, but this will give you an understanding of the sort of the range. So I'm comparing it here with the graduated fee, that average fee, and I'm showing you that the lowest proportionate, so, you know, parcel per parcel could be a dollar. Now, obviously, it's, you know, a home that has maybe a lot of grassy area, maybe they're doing a great job and they have a lot of vegetation, perhaps they don't even have a real pervy, excuse me, impervious driveway, perhaps there's some perviousness to it. They would really not bear the burden of this too much, because they're doing a good job. They're really eliminating their contribution to the storm, stormwater drainage system already. But there are others that may not be. There's a median that we've determined in this proportional fee, which is shown in the sort of darker green, seventy-seven dollars in terms of residential. And then what would the highest, highest fee be? And, you know, you get into some pretty large numbers. Clearly, what we determined was that there are some properties, even residential properties that are quite large, and although that, even if they're larger, they may have a lot more grassy areas or vegetation, they still have a pretty sizable in comparison, in a ratio, they have a sizable amount of roof area, of, you know, accessory dwelling area, their driveways may be much, much longer, et cetera, so that's why their impervious surface is costly. And I've done that for each of the other categories. So that gives you a flavor of the proportional fee, and again, I do have all, we have all of the data that actually you could look at in an Excel spreadsheet if you wanted to see every parcel. The fee options, again, now, you know, we'll get to this, but some critical questions is to sort of keep in the back of folks' mind is, how do you want to distribute the fee burden, and, you know, how do you, you know, want to think about both the equity piece that I started out speaking about, but also the explanation? You know, there's communities that have gone with more simplistic, because it's, it's really easier for everybody to understand that, well, I'm a residential property, and regardless of what I have on lot, I use the roadways, and I'm a contributor, and I'm an average with the rest of my, you know, community members. So these are just some questions that will need to be explored further. The next frame just gives you a couple of examples. I have two examples for the folks at home to get an understanding. As Joan mentioned, there are some communities that have put this in place, and the two examples I give are in Reading, and then the next in Newton. And I'm just showing you that, you know, A, this is something that is defendable, defensible in terms of the mass general law that allows this to happen. There's some lessons learned, just in terms of how you are communicating this fee to the public, and just essentially getting them to understand that this is really going to make their community better. This is something that would allow the community to ensure that their waters are clean, that the streets aren't flooded, that everybody has, you know, something to be proud of within their community, and they're all contributing to this. And then the next is just showing you, you have, there's not huge safety in numbers, but you do have some neighboring communities that have explored this in different ways, and so there's a number of case studies that we have in case you want us to take a look at the numbers a little bit differently. And then last, just talking briefly about what the next steps would be. You know, we have a full understanding of how to implement this fee, to get this fee across to your community, and what the options might be for administering this. And again, as I mentioned, it doesn't have to be a whole new department, it can, it can be something that's worked within an existing department, however, there's certainly other options. There's even communities that have talked about this, to be a shared utility across municipal boundaries, not to say that that's what we would talk about here, but there are different ways. And these next steps, we're here to help you with, so leave it at that.
Joan, could you go back to the, because one of the questions I had, and I think it's answered in the Reading example, is can you have a hybrid of using the, you know, an average fee for the residential and a proportional for the, the not-for-profit, for example, which-
Right.
-had a huge-
There's a big gap.
Yes. You absolutely can, yes.
And I think that's what it's, is that what Reading is doing?
Yes.
Yeah.
To some extent, yes, they have, it's more-
They have a flat fee to do, and-
Yep, and for their commercial and industrial, that is based on parcel, yes.
So in that hybrid, no matter the size of the property, there are forty-dollar flat fee?
Correct.
Is that an annual fee or a quarterly fee?
That's annual. It's surprising, you know, a small fee really goes a long way in terms of what you can get done for stormwater management, really.
Reading is a huge commercial and industrial tax base, so that's offsetting the other piece, so they're distributing it to the businesses as opposed to-
Whereas we're ninety percent, so it's a different component.
Right, but when you look at the thing, with ninety percent residential, but in terms of impervious surface, we're far less than ninety percent.
It's about seventy percent, yeah.
Okay.
And Reading also, bear in mind, I think that when Reading implemented their fee, they were only funding an incremental cost as opposed to taking on the full cost of their existing program.
True. Thank you.
But that's what I wanted to ask about, was, so if you go back to scenarios one and two, in scenario one, is the one point two million is the total cost under the new permit requirements annually, is that right?
That's, that's correct.
Phase one, of the new-
Phase one.
First year-
Yeah.
-of the new permit coming out.
But it's both the existing activities and the-
And the-
Existence is around five hundred thousand years, but I know we're putting into-
About six.
About, about six, right.
Okay.
And that doesn't include the-
Does include debt, no debt service.
Debt service.
But that's being funded every, we've been funding about five hundred thousand of that every year at town meeting. Are we putting the other hundred thousand out of the DPW budget?
No, no, there's five hundred thousand of operating costs and another five hundred thousand dollars of, not debt service, but capital costs every year. This year, it's a little more than that, but I think we did-
The goal was always five hundred thousand dollars in capital, in addition to the operating-
So that's kind of debt service come home.
All right, but hold on a second. That was a separate standalone article, right? The five hundred thousand, that's what we were, we did that through borrowing through the MWRA?
No.
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 General borrowing.
All right, and then there's a separate, Joan, you're saying there's a separate five hundred thousand dollars for operating that's being funded out of the DPW budget?
Absolutely. For example, we sweep streets, it's an eligible cost, it's a required activity, there's a cost where already occurring, sweeping streets is part of that. We clean catch bases, that's part of it. Our household hazardous waste collection day, twelve thousand dollars a year, it's required, it's partly, we're doing it already. A curbside organic recycling program, collection of yard waste.
Right, but, so I just want to get to the numbers here. So if we're talking about half million out of the operating budget, half million out of the separate borrowing article for capital, and now we're talking about first year one point two million, are we talking about a two hundred thousand dollar increase, or are we talking about a much greater increase?
No, a double, a doubling.
Double.
Of the operating. The capital expense probably stays about the same, it might go up depending upon what you decide, but at this point, it's, that, it's the surface drain article.
So it's really about one point two is the operating for the first year, and then on top of that, we'd have a capital cost, is that correct?
Correct. It would be the debt service of capital, unless you choose to fully fund it without borrowing, so it would be at least the debt service on a recurring basis.
Right.
And the investment, the borrowing strategies typically then to have them in borrowing, you know, life expectancies that as they retire, we're going out, you're funding the new ones coming in.
Right.
Same principles we're using for the rest of the capital townwide.
All right, so scenario one, that is the fee, so that in this, in this slide, it's the annual fee is a hundred and sixty-eight dollars for a single-family house, quarterly fee a forty-two. So the one point two million dollars in revenue that we're seeking to raise through this utility, that's really the full operating cost for year one, whereas scenario two, is this correct, is the six hundred thousand dollars what you're calling the gap?
No, no, one is the contingent budget, one's the non-contingent budget, operating only.
Actually, I think you're both saying the same thing and meaning two different things, and you're both right. If we're spending six hundred thousand dollars already, round numbers, we could say that that's what the town is already paying for through its tax base. One mindset might be to look at, keep that on the tax rolls, take this additional six hundred thousand out and fund that difference through a fee and only the fee.
Right, that's where my question is going.
That's not the direction we were going. We were going to fully fund it, you know, at that, at that basis. The other piece of it would be to, and the first one was give it just to demonstrate what it is we are spending.
It would seem to be administratively difficult to have some of this cost funded through the operating budget, some of it funded through a utility fee, and yet the capital piece would find it through a separate warrant article. I'm just, is that, that'd be my assumption, but is that correct or not?
No, what we were talking about was funding everything through a utility. So the, the capital costs after the utility is created would be, would be paid for, just like water and sewer is through the debt service.
So you're saying you're not recommending scenario two, you're recommending scenario one?
That would be, well, yes, although I think, yeah, we're saying the same thing differently. Right now, it just so happens that scenario one is our non-contingent budget, that is in our non-contingent operating budget, that would get removed from our non-contingent operating budget and move into the utility. That would free up six hundred thousand dollars-
Scenario two is, yeah, okay.
So if we have to go with a non-contingent budget this year, and we create the utility, what we do is two things. Number one, we pull six hundred thousand out of the operating budget, how many teaches is that? How many, you know, so many you have to, it's quite a few. And secondly, we share that six hundred thousand dollar burden with not just the taxpayers, but-
The tax exempt.
But, yeah, everybody, including, including the state, you know, the DCR property. Well, the DCR property has impervious. Plus parking lots and stuff.
Sure, sure. So as far as why we're here tonight is recognizing the juggling act we have going with schedules and timing. We have, all the departments have prepared a contingent, non-contingent budget, they're being vetted through the selectmen and the Warren Committee. We need to have a good understanding of where we go as we get into annual town meeting in the spring. And to do that is, we need to understand, is this off the tax rolls or is it not off the tax rolls? And because of that, the thought was to create an amendment to the existing stormwater bylaw to, one, create the utility, and, two, establish the funding mechanism, and, three, to allocate it in an enterprise account, so it segregates and stays with it, and can carry that burden. So it's those three things that bring us here tonight, because quite frankly, the February town meeting is upon us, and we're working very excited with it. We're going to be talking, two more articles on the agenda tonight, you're going to be talking about exactly those articles and this being one of them.
Right, right.
So as far as, you know, the actual warrant article is concerned, it's general, but the devil's in the detail, the floor of town meeting, they're going to want to understand what does this mean, and these answers to the questions raised tonight in the final issuance of this report gives town meeting, gives us the ability to give town meeting those answers in February.
Right.
So the article is clean as it's written, town council has reviewed it, but come town meeting, these answers have to be available, otherwise it's just going to be doomed for failure, as it should be.
Right, there's an education process between, we've got to figure out what we want to do and how we want to do it, but the second part of that is educating town meeting and the public as to, exactly that, why it's necessary, what its impact is, and how we're going to do it.
And I believe Ted, it'll probably be announced at a later date, I think it's January 12th, we were forecasting, forecasting, it is January 12th, right?
It's January 12th.
Forecasting an informational session for all the boards and committees, as well as open to the public, to come in and get something far less analytical, but more specific to what, why this is important, and have it in a forum where we can present and also field questions.
Okay. Ian, I know you have to say something.
I was just, good. I observe in terms of, the input that I think would be really useful for Julie to have tonight, is just to be clear, the warrant article that's been drafted, it doesn't actually create a fee, it authorizes the creation of a fee, and then if that passes, the board or whoever ends up being put in charge of that fee, would have to go through essentially a regulatory process to sort through all these possibilities more carefully, to- a regulatory process to sort through all these possibilities more carefully, decide how that piece is going to be structured, whether you're raising all the money or an increment of the money or half of the money or whatever, and, and sort of the charge, our assumption is that, you know, before the town folks want to authorize the creation of this fee, they're going to want to have some idea of what it might possibly look like if it does ultimately get implemented. So Julie has, you know, there's sort of, as you've, there's a million different ways you could set up this fee. Julie has done some analysis and some math and sort of figured out how many square feet of pavement on each parcel, and from that point you can sort of play a million different, you know, scenarios, you know, we could have scenario one through 99 if you wanted. I think what would be useful as, as you're talking to the town folks about what this fee might mean, would be to hear from you guys briefly, that if the town does pursue this, generally, what kind of fee structure do you think would be most appealing, and then that would give Julie an opportunity to do some math and give you some, some rough numbers that follow along with the, the kind of scenario, or maybe it's two scenarios that appeal to you as opposed to whatever you see and others think makes sense. And the, actually, the one last caveat I think, is that Milton does have very good aerial photographic data, so they have a very good sense of how much impervious is on each parcel, the one thing you'll have to do is, you know, the figures that Julie can generate for you are going to be very preliminary figures, there's always quirks, particularly in the way different properties are categorized, it's not so much about the area of impervious cover, but, you know, well, how do we categorize, you know, something that the assessor called an accessory residential use, you know, and it's that categorization that if this passes and if you decide to go forward with the fee, somebody's going to have to go through that very carefully, make sure all the parcels are categorized exactly, but what Julie can do is sort of take the basic data and give you a kind of quick first pass that you can use to talk to folks about what this might look like.
And I'll add to that, what we've offered in the report and with additional analysis for tonight are not, they're not, there are options that we would recommend, there are options that we feel are viable, but there are few obviously, and, you know, we'd be happy to explore others. We wanted to give you a flavor of what each of the type of analyses would be, but knowing that, for example, when I showed you that we tiered the residential, there are obviously different ways we could do that, so what Ian's saying is we need to narrow that in a bit.
You want to go around the room now and do that?
Could I, could, would it be helpful if I sort of maybe tried to frame the choices a little bit for folks? So, I mean, you know, I think one option is the flat fee, which is basically take the amount of money you need to raise divided by the number of parcels, somebody who owns a one-square-foot parcel with no pavement pays the same as, you know, somebody with a 20-acre parking lot. Our assumption is that's probably not a very appealing option, we just cross that one right off. The other alternative is the so-called proportionate fee, where you figure out basically exactly how many square feet of pavement are there across the entire town, and then figure out exactly how much pavement is on every single lot, and you charge, you set a fee, say, okay, there's 10 million square feet of pavement, we're trying to raise, I don't know, a million dollars, therefore it's $10 a year per square foot of pavement, and then everybody gets a bill for exactly the number of square feet of pavement they have on their lot. In some ways, that approach is sort of the most equitable, because it's exactly proportionate to sort of your share of the problem. From an administrative standpoint, that could be challenging, because now you're trying to, you know, are we going to have to argue about, well, I have 11 square feet versus 10 square feet on, you know, all 8,000 parcels in town? And then the third approach that I think I heard some people express an interest in is one that takes the bulk of parcels, which in Milton are single-family home parcels, and essentially figures out more of an average, so we figure out collectively, how much pavement do all the single-family home parcels have, how much pavement's on an average single-family home parcel, and all the single-family home parcels get charged that average fee. And then the hybrid piece is for the non-single-family home parcels, which could include commercial, could include state or publicly owned, could include institutional or nonprofit if you want to include those, they would pay a fee based on their actual impervious, or perhaps a multiple of how many single-family house equivalents they have. Is that, I sort of see nodding heads around that option as being perhaps the vote, a balance between equity and administrative workability, is that?
I think the one that was the most attractive to me was the tiered graduated for the residential, and then for the rest of the properties, you know, obviously allocating the fee based on total impervious surface and then specific identification of the commer-, because there aren't that many commercial and there aren't that many nonprofits, that wouldn't be a huge issue to do, and I think it, and it adds a little more equity, I think, to the residential by tiering it, you know, because we do have a very small.
Do you understand what the term tier means, it's essentially the same idea average, but instead of saying there's an average house, you say there's an average small house, an average medium house, an average big house.
Yes, exactly.
Or you could have two categories or.
Or an average, yeah, yeah.
So I actually, I'm in favor of the proportionate fee, and I know there's a lot of administrative work in that, but I think it's the most transparent and equitable solution, I also think that, you know, in reading through some of the notes, that there is an opportunity on some of the larger parcels of land, residential land, to cap, to come up with a cap, you know, a maximum fee, which I think, you know, if we work hard on it, could be a possibility to attain our goal.
I don't, I don't have a prob-, I think you're right, I think that is probably the, the absolute fairest way, the, what gets difficult in that is, this is all based upon aerial photos, right now we're using a 2012, by 2020, that, that could be very well out of date.
Right.
It is kind of expensive to do the aerial photos annually, and.
$112,000, when the last time we flew it, and that was with the LiDAR, which is the infrared photography that you need in order to do this analysis.
Right, so that's one issue, and the second issue is people looking for pavements, because they say, you know, I tore my driveway up last year, I don't have one anymore, you know, or something like that, you know, and so, you know, and how do you administer that? But otherwise, I agree with you, I think it is the most fair.
Yeah, yeah, I, I do think though that, you know, long-term, I mean, this is just the beginning, you know, and there's only so many towns that have done this, and we need to be preparing for the future, and I think that that's just one of the, you know, the fairest and most equitable way of doing things, but I'm not opposed to a hybrid plan, but I'd want to learn more about, you know, the long-term ramifications of doing so.
The, the initial, on your point, is the initial flyover in 2012 is, was accurate the day it was flown, the very next day it was inaccurate, wasn't obsolete, it was just not as good, somebody paved their driveway or put a swimming pool in their backyard, it changed, so something has changed from 12 to, you know, July 1 of 16, when we have, you know, when we're looking to implement, and there's that four-year window that's going to have some debatability, it's going to be very cumbersome to be able to resolve that, and then, once it's in place, whether it's annual flyovers or periodic flyovers, wouldn't we let them like the assessor going in every three years and doing the inspection of the house or looking at the revale?
Right.
But you would have to do that on a very specific basis, even when they do the revale, they don't go into every single house in the entire town, they rely on building permits that have values in them, we would have to have great reliance on what went to the building department, what are people doing in their backyards, as landscaping, by creating patio areas that didn't require permits that nobody would know about. So it, it becomes unwieldy, not impossible, but then you ask yourself, am I really spending $100,000 a year either flying it or hiring a person to stay on top of it only to raise the fee that much higher to collect, when do we accomplish it? So.
Well, you guys, you guys have studied this and you've looked at a lot of numbers, you know, what would your recommendations be to the town?
Well, when I had done the initial analysis in April, I actually, you know, felt a little differently than I do now. Back then, I thought that the proportionate, you know, was probably the best way to go, mainly because of the accuracy, however, in further conversations and having a better understanding of the maintenance of that programming, I think that having a hybrid is probably, you know, a more manageable approach. And I think that you can do it in different ways, I think that the, how you, whichever property type you choose to have an, a tiered or an average system would, it would, you'd need to think about, you know, for example, if it's, if it's for residential, that, that makes sense because of the fact that there's not as much variation in terms of what the contribution to the storm drain system, stormwater system is, however, when you get into industrial or, I'm sorry, commercial and the tax exempt actually, there's real wide variations, so that's where I would say you may want to consider doing something that's a little bit more precise in terms of what that property looks like, let's say.
And that's what Tom's identified as the hybrid, looking at that, because the example you used was a tax-exempt church, parking lot in a building fully occupying a lot, 100% coverage for all intent and purpose, as opposed to the tax-exempt school that may have a dormitory and, and parking areas and driveways, but a lot of green space, but nonetheless, there's clearly more impervious area at the tax-exempt dormitory site as opposed to the church, yet without some sort of hybrid, they'd be getting the same development, and that wouldn't be fair.
Right.
So I think I have a more fundamental question, which is, what is the rush for this for February as opposed to May, because we're getting, let me just, we're getting a lot of information tonight, we're looking at a town meeting, you know, we've got all, two holidays in between, we're basically five weeks out from the town meeting, what, what is the benefit to taking this up in February versus doing a presentation to town meeting on this to let people know what's being considered, and then to put this forward for the May town meeting, when we know we're going into the May town meeting with a contingent and a non-contingent budget, and we're talking about a fee that, you know, if we were to take this route, obviously, we'd be talking about a lower override budget amount.
Correct.
So why not have the discussion all at once rather than at two different town meetings?
Because it just complicates things that much more, now you would have to go into town meeting, three budgets.
With a third budget.
Which would be just totally unwieldy. Secondly, we're not, all we're doing is giving us in February the ability to do it.
No, I understand that it's just an optimization.
We can make the decision down the road, hey, this isn't working, and just abandon it, you know, at, at that point, and just go with what we have, but all it, all it does is, and I realize it's a short time period and we have a lot of work to do, but, but I think the benefits, potential benefits of it are worth it, but, but I, I think if you wait till May to try and do the whole thing, it's just, it's just so unwieldy.
Why is it three budgets, why isn't it?
Because what if it doesn't, what if they, we need, we need an override budget that includes the stormwater in it, one that doesn't, we, we need them to pass the, we need them to pass the utility and the amendment to the bylaw, I mean, it just gets really, really unwieldy to try and do the whole thing all at once.
Okay, but I thought we had two scenarios here for the contingent and non-contingent budget.
But, but then we'd need a third being the, the, the non-contingent and contingent budget, assuming it doesn't pass, assuming we don't get the utility, so, so you've got so many iterations.
Well, I mean, isn't that just a matter of the request, the request would be what we know the total cost for this would be, and the, depending, the recommendation the Warren Committee would vary depending upon whether under a separate article you approve a stormwater utility, isn't that how it would work? So we'd have two budgets, and, and the recommendation might vary depending on whether we pass.
Well, you'd certainly at least need a third budget for DPW, because that includes the, so you'd need one with, one without, one, you know, so you'd need three there.
The concern I have, Tom, is obviously you've, you've been in some meetings with, you know, with Julia, with Joe, and with Ian on this, I have not, so, and that's just a function of how a board works, but, you know, there's, I think there's a lot of information here, and I think there's a lot of questions, and I'm not sure we've.
My suggestion would be.
We've got the full information that we need to go forward.
My suggestion would be that we, we let the, and we're open in closing basically, and put it in there, I mean, if, after everybody absorbs it for, for another couple of meetings and say, this isn't, you know, we don't like it, this is not working, we don't think, we can always pull the article.
That's an option, we could pull the article, when is the, do either of you remember, when is the deadline for the printer, and when is the, and when is, what is the timing of this meeting, in January, I think it's a January 12th?
12th, right.
I mean, how soon are we at that point to go into the printer? What I like about this is the fact that we can capture some tax-exempt properties and bring them into paying for this service that we, I know it was a requirement that has to be funded, but, you know, I like things to go to town meeting when we've got all the Ts crossed and all the Is dotted, we have the full.
I agree, well, yeah.
And I'm not sure that we do here.
We've got a couple of months to do that, though.
The warrant goes to the printer on January 12th. Plan changes to the printer on January 20th, because it has to be in the homes by January 26th because of, it's a special town meeting, it's 14 days.
So we've got, we've got a month and a week to, before.
With two holidays in between, really, which we basically lose two weeks in there, I mean, well, essentially, we're losing between now and early January, so.
Yeah.
But you were going to.
Oh, we've got a couple more meetings anyway.
You're going to have your meeting on January 12th, the MS 4101 workshop with the conservation of the planning and what the Warren Committee.
And that'll be a live meeting, too.
And that's within a selectance meeting, that's about a 90-minute presentation, and then you also need to have a meeting at the end of January for the whole, for the townwide community to come to, to hear the presentation as well, that's the end of January.
And one footnote is, the January 12th, and we can change this, if you prefer, the January 12th meeting, we were planning to mostly have a talk about the MS 4, and whatever requires, and sort of where Milton stands, but, but we initially were not planning to have an in-depth discussion of the stormwater utility at that meeting, if you think we need to do that, we can do it.
I'm not sure, clear on that, Ian, you're not going to have a discussion similar to the discussion tonight, which I think is what's, this is what's creating some of the issues.
Right, the original intention was to have, you know, we, we sort of, with tonight's meeting, we didn't really delve into the substance of what's in this permit and how much it's going to cost and that sort of stuff, we, we sort of mostly focused, you know, we sort of skipped over that and said, oh, how are we going to pay for it? So this January 12th meeting, the original concept for the agenda was that it was going to focus on that background information about the MS 4 permit, but not be an in-depth discussion of the stormwater utility proposal. If you think that's the wrong way to use that time at that meeting, you should let us know that, and we'll plan to also cover the stormwater utility in greater depth.
I think it would make sense to cover the stormwater utility as well, but maybe we could narrow the focus down to just, just a single method, you know, in terms of explaining what utility is, what it's trying to capture, you know, and, and if we can, if collectively we can kind of decide, you know, this is probably the way we want to go, because you're already talking 90 minutes to.
Those can be my questions to Jim, and how much time now do you think you'd need for that January 12th meeting?
I think we can fit it in the same space, that January 12th meeting, there was a lot of time set aside for discussion amongst the boards, so we could essentially collapse some of that and use some of that time to talk about stormwater utilities.
I can just, this is, tonight just, tonight took an hour.
Yes, it's the last one for you.
But a lot, a lot of that hour was discussion and, as opposed to presentation.
Joe, you're the department head who's most affected by this, what is your thought in terms of February versus May, in terms of helping you with your budget preparation for May, or what are pros and cons?
So my budget's done, when I first heard of this, I cringed, Emery and I both cringed simultaneously, we were convinced on it and recognized it's real aggressive, I firmly believe if we are not prepared to pull it, because if you go in ill-prepared, not only does it fail in, in January or in February, then you bring it forward when you think you're ready in May, it's that much more difficult to pass, so that's my first thought. We pulled together internally and understood, all of us wringing our hands together and got together, and when we met last week as a group, we were a little more optimistic by, by focusing more on the stormwater utility itself and not the. by focusing more on the stormwater utility itself and not the general bylaw rewrite, which will eventually need to be done when the new permit comes out. So, we're going to be coming back probably in October with a new rewrite of the, of the bylaw as a whole. So, when we were focusing on just the stormwater, I thought it was, I thought it was doable, aggressive.
You mean doable and aggressive, meaning February.
In February. I did think that, but there's a lot of work still to be done, and again, it's complicated. Mostly, it's, mostly it's equity that you folks have to side on. As a starting point, and once that's decided, the number crunching becomes tedious, but relatively easy to understand what the impact is for the average household, the large household, the small household, and the various classes of land uses. I think that information is what ultimately is going to be taken to task as we get into the February meeting. Because honestly, the article is easy to create the utility, to give you folks the authority to establish an equitable fee, and then to collect the fee and hold it in an account. It's really only that, but that's so simple, it's going to raise all the questions that we raised tonight.
Exactly.
What does it need to make?
Yeah. So, we need to be very clear on that, and we need to be very clear very soon.
I would say if we were to, and I understand you've seen a very complicated group of information probably for the first time, and any sort of detail for sure. If we were to walk away from the table of the evening with an understanding that, I like methodology X, you should proceed accordingly, we could do all of that work, and I believe we are at least ready to have those answers for the January meeting and therefore be ready for the February meeting. Not walking away with a clear understanding of what the preference of the board is as far as the most desirable of the least offensive
Right.
Structure. We lose a week of time until, until we get that direction from you folks. And I'm not, that's not a criticism, that's a reality.
Right.
You don't want to force anything down, down anyone's throat.
I agree with Joe that we certainly don't want to go in, if we're not ready, we don't want to go in. I totally agree with that. But I can just see it being very chaotic if we try and go in in May with asking for a utility, asking for an override budget, and, you know, contingent and non-contingent budget and utility.
That was the second piece of Kate's question, and what, I didn't want to say what you had already said, but I do agree. It almost takes the public works question with regards to stormwater, and almost takes it out as its own separate standalone a la carte, proctun and over right question of whether to fund stormwater or not, by offering it as a, as a third, or a second contingency, non-contingent, two contingencies. It really, in essence, is what it would become if you did it all in May.
Yeah, and, and I guess the other thing, I mean, I suppose we could do it informationally in February, but it's, it's a couple of cracks to make that explanation to the taxpayers of what, especially what the impact to the non-contingent budget is. Because it's, I'm telling you, you know, without saying what the numbers are, that non-contingent budget is extremely ugly right now, extremely ugly.
I'm sure it is.
And to carve $600,000 out of it would be huge in terms of-
Yeah, no question.
So, we could keep, we could keep moving on this, and we could always pull it if we, if we're not.
Right.
Right. So, I mean, I'd be in favor of continuing to move forward on this, at least to, you know, as you said, you know, cross your Ts and dot the Is and, you know, wrap our head around this. I would like to, to get a little bit more information. You've had the opportunity to-
I've had one meeting, yeah, so one meeting you guys have had.
Right.
I mean, Joe, in answer-
With each of you individually, you know, one-on-one, and if we need to get my colleagues here with us to do that, we can do that as well. But it certainly can't do it, well, as a group, the
But I have a meeting.
The law issue, but you know, to get, you may have to read this in more detail. There's a very specific question you'd like to-
But like you said, we have to come to a pretty solid agreement on, on a plan here, and so that you guys can start doing the numbers.
Right.
That's correct.
And I think there's even more tweaking of that, because I know, if you notice that there's a large percentage of commercial, of industrial property in that thing, which is probably just because of the way it's classified on the assessors.
Land use code?
Yeah. Yeah, exactly. Which really, we don't have any
Doesn't really exist.
Industrial.
Right.
So, just to make sure those things are right.
Exactly. Joe, in answer to your question, I mean, this, you know, just speaking for myself, there's no way I could tell you what my preference would be on that tonight, because we just got this, you know, I just saw this information for the first time tonight. So, the PowerPoint is, has a lot in it, and it's very helpful, but it's something that I think we need more than just to listen to it tonight to make a decision. So, obviously-
I totally agree with that.
And we don't have another, well, we have an executive session next week, but we don't have another meeting until January, first week of January. So, that is my concern about the timing, that if you need something from us pretty quickly, I guess you could hear, you could talk with us each individual.
Well, you could talk with us individually. We could work through it.
We still have time, too, if you wanted to put, have one article in an open meeting, one, I'd have an open meeting after the executive session.
It's just sort of like guidance for what you're going to have as an initial discussion.
Because you're not going to implement whatever Julie ultimately calculates for you if you
ultimately move forward with this, and have a whole more thorough process with more time to talk about how much money you do want to collect and how you want to collect if you-
There can be a range of impacts. When the actual fees calculated, that really, you'll have all spring right up until you set a fee, much like you could do water surfees, you'll set that fee sometime before July 1, June 30, you know, going to be effective July 1.
But you certainly don't want to go in and tell the, the average taxpayer it's going to be $80 and then tell them it's going to be $160 or something like that.
No, absolutely. We've got to be pretty clear on that, right?
Exactly.
Yeah, I don't know. I'm still really kind of, I'm not sure that I accept the argument that in three budgets at the, at the May town meeting, I, I think this is part possible, the override discussion frankly, and that they probably should happen simultaneously. I, you know, I know that it's an authorization. I am not inclined to submit this to the February town meeting because I think there's still a lot of open questions and a lot of information that's just coming up for the first time, and we don't have-
I think we still have enough time to do it. I mean, if we don't, we pull it, but I think we still have enough time to do it.
If we don't, we pull it.
Yeah. Okay, that's my.
Is there anything else we need to, tonight to help?
Yeah, I don't think so. I guess I'll get rid of-
The agenda itself is being discussed on a separate
Yes.
agenda, correct?
Right. Right. I think, I think the analysis was very helpful.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And, yeah, if you could just move forward, at least try to, you know, clear up those parcel things, you know, just so, so next time we can get a little more accurate in terms of those. And what do you think about, we do have a meeting on the 22nd, it's an executive session, but there's still enough time to put a one item.
I don't know. I'm not sure that I'd want to do that on the 22nd. I suppose we could schedule a different meeting for it. No, thank you.
Um-
This is the same one, right?
Those are the others.
Thank you.
Thank you. Joe, when would we have a sense, you said this 40 to 50 communities considering this, when will we have a sense of where they're at in the process and what approaches they're taking?
I don't know. I don't know the answer to that. I mean, we, we're all colleagues, we're all talking to each other. Everybody has something in the works. I don't, I don't know if they're considering special town meetings. Cities can bring them up at any city council session. It's not as though you have to wait to, you know, a town meeting to do that. So, I think these things are going to roll out little by little, but I know there's 40 to 50 that are right now recognizing the importance of the new permit, the funding of it, and they're all talking utility. Emery, Amy and I went to a conference David Beverley put on, and it had to be 200 people in, in the room, you know, probably, probably representing those 40 or 50 communities.
That's right.
That was, that was a year ago.
Yeah, it's very good.
Seems it was about a year ago.
Yeah.
Yeah, it just seems that there's only seven right now. We don't, there's not a lot of guidance. I know that this is in effect in other states, but in these, in terms of Massachusetts, there's not a lot of guidance.
Chickaby's had it for quite a while. Newton's had it for quite a while.
But I mean, communities are a little comparable to-
Redding's fairly comparable. Actually, Chickaby, Chickaby in terms of size is probably fairly comparable.
It's so, so-
But it's rural.
Yeah, I mean, you can't just look at the demographic. There's so much more that goes into it, you know, how much open space, what's their roadway network look like?
Right.
How old is the community?
Yeah.
How old is your collection system? There's a lot that weighs into it, just the demographic, I don't think it's-
What the costs are and everything else. I agree with that, yeah. I mean, I suppose we could reach out to those communities and see what, you know, what their process was in terms of bringing it forward, especially Redding where it's a town, how it's been accepted since they brought it forward.
Actually, Redding was one of the presenters at that February forum that we went to. You guys are at the same one, right?
Is that the one who presented that?
Yes, you were there.
Well, I'm thinking what their method is that they're using for the, for the structure.
Yeah, that's what, that's what you were saying as well. Redding was flat fee and then proportional for, for everybody else, but they did-
If it helps, I do have, it's just a Word document, very, very brief summary of the seven that have been put in place and what their sort of highlighted elements are, you know, what is the fee and how is it distributed, if that helps.
That would be helpful. I mean, can't hurt to have that.
I guess I would just offer one, one last piece, which is just that, as to say, you know, the, the work that we've done, Ian and our colleagues, in looking at this MS4 permit, the costs will increment over time. There will be additional costs each year. There's requirements that you need to meet, the first year, the second year, the fifth year. And so, what we're presenting in terms of this existing need for revenue, it very well may be increased. You know, this is sort of anecdotal, not, you know, specific to your budget, but it's a long-term funding need. And so, with regard to the specificity, we can get there, but I guess I would just offer that it is definitely something in terms of consideration, that that will be an ongoing cost that increases.
Well, that's the thing. Those are the questions that will come up at a town meeting and in discussions before the town meeting.
Right.
As much information of that as can be obtained, if this does go forward in February, is, is going to be important.
And the point being, too, that it's, it's an ongoing cost, it's going to be incurred no matter how you do it.
Yes.
So, it's just a matter of-
Right. That this is a service.
Right.
One other question. You said Dedham was the other town that was, we and Dedham were the pilot participants. Where is Dedham at in the process? Do you know?
I don't want to criticize a neighbor, but I think they were further behind than we were. They had a lot of the analytical information available, but they themselves didn't even have a bylaw until this, this past May, correct? So, they actually, so they passed their very first bylaw, which should have been passed 12 years ago, just passed this past May. So, and it didn't want to include the question of creating the utility, you know, it was part of the study.
I think they also felt that they didn't want to move forward until the final EPA permit.
Was it Canton that did pass a storm-
It does have an existing stormwater bylaw with the utility, though.
They don't charge.
They have never actually charged anybody any money for it, but they've actually had it for quite some time.
And it passed over London, the town, yeah?
Yes. This was, might have even been 10 years ago.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you again. All right, I have another agenda, so I'll catch up to you. So, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thanks, everyone.
Okay, item number nine is the approval and adoption of the town's snow and ice control policy.
Okay. So, the document I just handed out this evening was the work product I wanted, several editorial notes, mostly editorial, some, some were substantive. For example, the staffing requirement section was taken right up as it, like, like we were ultimately effects, or we at least required some impact parking discussions. So, it's been taken right out. Everything else has been mostly editorial, so I do want to thank you all for the comments that have been incorporated in here. Never realized the, how bad my grammar can be sometimes. But this was not one of my better grammatical products.
I thought it was in pretty good shape.
Yeah, I actually think it's a great, it threw us a lot, and, you know, I commend you guys for putting this together. I think it's a very good document. It's going to be very useful.
Do a motion.
Yeah, I'm going to make a motion to approve the adoption of the town's snow and ice control policy as written.
Second.
Motion made. Second, any further discussion? Seeing not all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. So, where this is not a bylaw or a strictly a policy, we'll get this up on the DPW website, you know, swamp section, immediately tomorrow morning.
Great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Joe, anything else?
Unless you want to stay around for the, the discussion of the-
I'll, I'll be in the room.
Yeah.
If you want, I guess the article requires some discussion, sure.
I don't think it will, but-
But I'll be here, sure.
Okay, I'm telling the agenda is the approval of the February 2016 special town meeting index and greeting page.
Well, I'll move that we approve the indexing greeting pages for the February 2016 special town meeting.
I'll second that.
Motion made. Second, any further discussion? Seeing not all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and then the, the motion to approve the following articles for inclusion in the February 8, 2016 special town meeting. And we've got four articles. The amendment to chapter 10 of the general bylaws, general landscaping, general landscaping business use, amendment to chapter 10 of the general bylaws, central planned unit development, amendment to chapter 10 of the general bylaws, parkway planned unit development, which is a citizen petition, and amendment to chapter 21 of the general bylaws, stormwater management.
On the Central Avenue planned unit development?
Mm-hmm.
This is the one that Alex Whiteside wrote? It's related to the Henry's Building?
Yes.
I just checking that, all right, it doesn't say submitted by the planning board, but that, that will get added. I did speak with Alex about this. I think the board of selectmen should consider co-sponsoring this with the planning board. I, you know, I've been working pretty much hand in hand to try to get a good resolution at this side, and I think that it would be helpful if we co-sponsored that article.
I don't have a problem with that.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Anything else in these articles?
Mr. Chin, I would just like you to note the article for the chapter 10 amendment regarding the veterinary permit.
Yes.
John Flynn, Town Council, had to make some minor modification changes today from the article that was submitted yesterday.
Some in our package.
So, the new articles in your package, I just want you to note that the planning board will be approving the changes, which were just technical changes, at their meeting Thursday evening.
Okay.
Okay.
Great. I'll make a motion to approve the following articles for inclusion on the February 8, 2016 special town meeting warrant. Amendment to chapter 10 of the general bylaws, landscaping business use, amendment to chapter 10 of the general bylaws, central lab planned unit development, amendment to chapter 10 of the general bylaws, parkway planned unit development, and amendment to chapter 21 of the general bylaws, stormwater management.
And I'll ask you to consider a friendly amendment, which is to delete the fourth one. And if you don't want to, I understand that, I mean, we could break it out and vote it in two separate motions, the first three and the last one.
I mean, I will want a second amendment with it in there.
I mean, it sure doesn't really second motion.
Yeah, I'll say, that's fine.
Well, it's your motion. I think if, if no one wants this friendly amendment, can we, let's, then why don't we vote separately and do the first three and do the fourth?
Okay, so I will propose a motion to approve the following article for inclusion on the February 8, 2016 special town meeting warrant, to amend chapter 10 of the general bylaws, landscaping business use. Do one at a time.
Yeah, do you want to do the first three together?
Oh, okay, first three, okay. And also to- Oh, okay, first three, okay, and also to amend chapter 10 of the general bylaws, central lab planning, planned unit development, and amend chapter 10 of the general bylaws, parkway planned unit development.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, any further discussion? Seeing not all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, okay. One more motion.
Okay, yeah, and to approve the following article for inclusion on the February 8th, 2016 town meeting warrant, amend chapter 21 of the general bylaws, stormwater management.
I'll second it for discussion.
Okay, motion made, seconded, any further discussion?
My only concern is timing, I think there's too many open questions on this, I like the idea, it's a good concept, I think we're rushing it in February, and I understand we could pull the article, but in, you know, I understand the majority is in favor of submitting it, but I'm planning to vote no, just for timing issues.
Okay, any further discussion? Seeing not all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, one.
Okay, item 11, discussion and approval of conditions of Mr. Chan common visual license. With Bob Shekelsky?
Hi, Bob. Anything else?
This is really pretty straightforward. Nothing unusual in here, just increasing his closing by half hour for the most part.
I'm fine with this.
I thought it looked good.
Yeah, I have no problem with it.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion to approve the 2016 common visual license for Ho-John Inc., DBA Mr. Chan's, 534 Adam Street.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, any further discussion? Seeing not all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay, item, item 12 is approval of common visual license for the Blake and Susan Lombardi's here, and, hi Susan.
Hi, how are you?
Good, how you doing?
Good.
Bob, I haven't seen you in a while, huh? Okay, the only thing that confused me about this, but it's fine, is, is when you filled out the, the license application, you took information from the old location, or not the old location, still your location, but the, and included as the current.
That was the only thing I.
That was weird, but, but I understand.
The hours, whether the hour's going to change at Central Avenue or just at the marketplace.
Oh, this is just the marketplace.
Oh, right, but the way it was, the way I saw it too, and I just wanted to confirm that, because, and I assume, but.
Okay, sorry for.
No, that's okay, just wanted to make sure though.
And as of right now, you're not asking for any evening hours, that will come later, is that what it is?
I think that the evening hours should be specified on the different licenses, the same as was approved by the Board of Appeals, which is 9:00 P.M. That will permit the restaurant to open on an evening basis if and when it's ready without having to come back to the Board.
If I'm reading correctly, the proposed is 5:00 P.M., 3:00 P.M. Sunday.
Yes.
So there are no evening hours right now?
Not right now.
Okay.
But the plan is.
To come back and change it or whatever.
And that could be when the license is approved, et cetera.
And that's what I meant.
Yep.
Okay.
Great. Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the 2016 common visual license for Lombardi Enterprises' LLC, DBA the Blake at 10 Bassett Street.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made, seconded, any further discussion?
When are you planning on opening, Suzanne?
We're shooting for the 31st of December.
Great.
Yeah.
Exciting.
That is great. Diana Seer.
Good.
People looking forward to that.
Okay, any further discussion? Seeing not all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Item 13 is approval to extend the hours for Abbey Park for New Year's Eve to 1:00 A.M. on December 30th. We have 1:00 A.M. on January 1st, isn't it?
Right.
1:00 A.M. on January 1st, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the request of Abbey Park at 5:50 Adam Street in Novara at 556 Adam Street to extend hours of operation from 12:00 A.M. to 1:00 A.M. on January 1st, 2016.
Second.
Okay, motion made, seconded, I guess my own question is, we don't even technically know if Navara's going to be open, but.
Oh, actually, that's right, Marion gave us some conditions, right, that she wanted.
Are we at the Sephardi someplace?
Yeah, so why don't we offer friendly them and the motion will be conditional on final approval of delivery license by the ADCC issuance of the licenses, the license by the Board and opening of the restaurant honor before December 31st.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion made, seconded, any further discussion? Seeing not all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay, item 14, the agenda is approval of the O P E N trust, and I've read through it, I'm fine with the language in it, but.
Yeah, I have too, I'm fine with the language.
So I move that we approve the Town of Milton Other Post-Employment Benefits Trust, trust agreement as written.
I'll second that.
Motion made, seconded, any further discussion? Seeing not all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Item 15 in the agenda is board committee appointments, town government study committee.
A move to reappoint Richard Neely of 23 Russell Street, John Cronin of 131 Park, Phil Matthews of 154 Reedsville Road, and Leroy Walker of 452 Truman Parkway to the Town Government Study Committee to serve through November 2016.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, any further discussion? Seeing not all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Let's see, item 16, board committee appointments, sign review committee.
A move to reappoint William Clark, Director of Planning and Community Development, Lawrence Johnson of Churchill Street, Raymond Phil of 457 Elliot Street, and Sean John Zikows, Zikowitz, excuse me, of 8 Morton Terrace to the Sign Review Committee to serve through December 2016.
Before, just a question, I thought Bill was not a member.
Yeah, I know.
I thought we had that question come up before.
He's just a.
He's a, yeah, he's ex-official liaison, so you don't have to reappoint him.
Okay.
All right, that changed, then I'll, I'll second it.
Mm-hmm.
I thought there was, you know, that we all went to that function, the Milton Airport Association had for the Joe Manning Award.
Yes.
Presentation, there was some, there was someone at that meeting who had expressed an interest, did we get any other volunteer applications for this committee?
I will check with Barbara in the morning, but I'm not sure.
Maybe not, but I know we were looking to put some more people on this committee, and there was someone who expressed an interest, so maybe we can follow up.
I'll follow up.
We can always make a.
Joe O'Neil, I don't want to put Joe out there, he's watching.
Yeah.
We'll look into it.
All right, we can always do it later.
Okay, motion made, seconded, any further discussion? Seeing not all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Item 17 is town administrator report.
Mr. Chairman, I would just like to, since this will be our last meeting before the holiday, I just want to wish the Board and the Town of Milton residents a happy holidays and a happy and healthy New Year.
Thank you, same to you.
Same to you as well.
And that's it, in the interest of the executive session.
Yes. Item 18 is chairs report, and I, other than that one, what you just said, I have no further report. Item 19 is members report.
I don't have anything at this time.
Neither do I.
Okay, 20 citizen speak responses?
I think we should respond to what Dave Shay said earlier tonight.
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
I did see the tape of that planning board meeting, I don't know, both of you.
I heard, sorry, I didn't see it, but, I mean, I, I mean, I've heard those things before also, and there is no kinder person that I know of than Joe Prandak, and fair person from everything I know about him. And, you know, he is a, you know, I don't know exactly how to say it, but it is a very unfair characterization of him, and it definitely is not him. He's got a very difficult job to do, and he does it the best way he knows how, and I think he does a great job.
I do too, I responded to Dave earlier today to the email that he sent to all of us, just telling him Joe has the full support and confidence of the Board and is dealing with a very difficult situation up at their nursery with, with your butters, and there's multiple litigation cases pending.
Yep.
And that sometimes creates tension, and people make comments out of frustration, possibly at a public meeting, and, but the Board, but Joe has the Board's full support.
There's a lot of emotion that can happen.
Yes.
You know, I think that to echo both of your comments, that he does have the Board's full support.
Yeah, in terms of the other comment, in terms of the designee, I mean, it's common to have a, a designee in, in one of these things, but I would assume it would be Joe that would name the designee, or am I incorrect in that?
That, the planning board talked a little bit about that, the other piece of this is that the planning board, the Chair of the Planning Board, Emily Ennis, did say that the discussion about the building commissioner was not appropriate for their meeting, and I thought handled it well when the comments were made. I think they're taking that up on Thursday, and that's really within their purview with the special permit, but it's not unusual to have a designee, I agree.
Correct, yeah, it would be unusual to have the person being inspected, appointed designee, but, you know, so I would hope that, it's not the case, but.
I think we can leave that in the capable hands of the planning board, at least to respond to Dave's concern when the comments are made about the building commissioner.
Okay, future agenda items? I mean, other than the ones we talked about, trying to get the, the policies, financial policies.
For the January 5th agenda, we will have hopefully the first pass of the budget numbers and your financial policies.
Okay, and pile it, there's someplace on the line.
Mr. Burns and I are hoping to sit down over the next couple of weeks and try to get highly.
And I've had discussions with some of the assessors and Bill Bennett, the Chairman, and we're, we're moving forward.
Yeah.
Good. We also have to have your NPAG review, annual review on in January.
Mm-hmm, okay.
So I'm going to make sure we put that on early in January or maybe later in January because January 5th will probably be a financial night, and then the 12th will probably be a very lengthy discussion on stormwater utility.
Let's make sure we have enough, enough notification to get citizen, you know, input on that, that's the only thing.
January 12th?
On the, the NPAG, the.
Annual review?
Yeah, yeah, just so, so we, whether citizens have any comments or not, I think we should hear them, but, because that was one of the problems, I think, last year is, it was very, did we really, did we really hear many citizens?
We did, yes.
We did have a couple, yeah.
We did. I thought you were going to mention the stormwater, is there, can we advertise that so that enough people will come, because I think that's, that will help if, if you can try to get enough of a crowd to come or to be watching it on television, it will help with.
Well, we're going to have cable, just, we're going to have cable just run it several times on TV.
Yes, and we're going to put a notice on the cable, and we're hoping that Ms. Griffin has an article in the Times about it for the January 12th meeting, stormwater utility. And so, yes, we will just, in our reach, that's our intent.
Now, on the January 5th meeting, are we going to have a discussion about the town administrator search process?
Oh, that's, yes, I'm sorry, neglected to say that.
Okay, good.
I pulled together the process that was used in the past, and so we'll be giving all the documentation.
Great, thank you.
Okay, my being said, I will propose a motion to enter into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to litigation and to consider the purchase exchange, taking lease or value of real property, believing that having such discussion, open session, would have a detrimental effect on the litigating or negotiating positions of the Board and to return to open session for the purpose of adjournment.
So moved.
Okay, Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Mr. Burns?
Yes.
Mr. Hurley, yes, we are in the executive session.